Okay, folks. If we could once again proceed with the afternoon budget deliberations. Good afternoon and welcome back to the 2023 Budget Deliberations for the Town of Quispamsis. We are welcoming back the Director of Engineering Works and Utilities, Mr. Gary Loge. Mr. Loge.
Thank you, Your Worship. And first off, I do want to acknowledge the fact that the Community Services Group is an integral part of the community as well. I didn't mean to say that they were nice to have. I do love them and their people and their staff. And she can take me in arm wrestling when we argue over budget things, so I have to be nice to her. Your Worship, we stopped in the middle of questions for the engineering side, Street Capital. Just before we move on to the utility, I guess if there's any more questions or clarifications that's required from the engineering side. The Street Capital program is one that... It's going to be dependent on, like I talked about a little earlier, the economic impacts that we go to tender. But our desire is to stay ahead of the curve. And as I was saying to Councillor Bigger just a second ago, our payment rating system is one that is very much dependent on what we do each year helps us keep the average the average payment ratings up and reduce the number of lowly, lower rated streets. But what happens is, obviously, is every year you use it, a street rating will go down. It just doesn't stay there. So it's an ongoing battle, and that's why we try to have target ranges rather than specific numbers of streets or asphalt, things of that nature. But if there are no questions with respect to...
There are questions, actually, Mr. Loge. I'm going to go first to Councillor Olson, and then to Councillor Luck, and then to Deputy Mayor Skryer. Councillor Olson.
Thank you, Your Worship. Mr. Loge, just going back one step. Looking at the control upgrades for the Pedigill Road and Hampton Road, I also wanted to ask if there's... What is the status of improving the lighting at Donlon Drive? Where 10:30, 10 o'clock at night on, there's... The traffic light is automatically activated. And in the middle of the night or whatever, well, 10 o'clock on, you're driving through there, there's no traffic, and you still run against, up against a red light. You know, just for an automatic changing of lights, and there's nobody around. And I think that it's almost tempting some people to run the red light in that case, just because of the frustration. What is, what's behind that lack of movement?
The, the system that we have at that Donlon Drive intersection is probably the oldest one in the town. So the capacities are limited in our evening settings. Our philosophy with that is the bulk of the traffic is on the Hampton Road. And that would stay Main Street green all the time, so that if somebody pulls up to the side street, then they would get a signal. So that's what, I mean, we have activation in that, in that... So if you have a system that is not a vehicle activated, then you would, then you would go to your point about a flashing system. But where it's vehicle activated on the side, so we, we work with the bulk of the traffic going straight through. Assuming that's where all the traffic is going to be, it's much easier and better to have that going all the time, and the side street pulls up. To your point about 3 o'clock in the morning, 3 o'clock in the morning, quite frankly, if I'm at that red light and there's nobody coming either way, I treat it as a stop sign and I go through the red light. Don't tell the police that. But generally speaking, that's the approach that we take for, for Main Street green.
But my, my experience has been that, that the light automatically changes whether it's activated from the two side roads or not. And so the Hampton Road is, you still have to stop and stare at nobody. And then, like you say, you run the red light. I don't think that's a safe practice really to, to, to do. And I just wondered, what is necessary to change that so that, if you can change the innards on those controllers?
Well, we can, we can take two approaches. One, we can look at the controller mechanism that's there and see if, I'm, I'm not at this... I was gonna say Mark wasn't here, but we generally, I don't think we're changing the controls at the Pedigill. We're adding a component, so we're not, so otherwise we would take the controller of the Pedigill, put it over there. But it is a 20-year-old internal controller. Generally, the controllers run about $25,000 to $35,000. And that particular intersection, it would involve bringing that up to speed. We can look at that in our, in our, in our program and see if that's something that we can do. The other thing we can do is see if there's a way to reconfigure or reflash the controller itself and see if we can reprogram it. But we'll, we can take a look at that, Your Worship.
Follow-up, Councillor Olson?
Yeah, thank you. So is that something that we can do? Because I know, I think I talk about this every year. And it's, it's a frustrating thing to have. I mean, because I like the setup at, at the Quispamsis Road and Vincent Road. Where at 10 o'clock, it flashes.
Not there. The level of traffic is not there, the same that we see on the Hampton Road, so that's...
Yeah.
It requires less control.
Yeah, so the, the red light is on the, is on the Vincent Road. You know, so you automatically come to a complete stop and then watch and go. And that's what I'm, I'm proposing that we do, just reversing that so that straight through would be the Hampton Road. And you come and you stop at the, at Donlon Drive, you know, we're coming out of the mall. You stop there and turn left or right with, you know, with the flashing red light. Is that something that's achievable?
It's the programming of the system itself, and we can, we'll go through the, the controller. The default settings that we have is how it operates now. So it's going to depend on the signals that's coming out from the pedestrian buttons and the loops in the ground. And if we override all of that and just go to its basic programming and just throw it into it, at 10 o'clock, it goes into a simple flash mode. That's, it would be just a reset of the, of the programming in it. So as, we'll see if that, if that particular controller has that capacity, then we'll, we'll look at that, definitely.
Thank you, Councillor Olson. We're going to go to Councillor Luck, please, who is virtual today. Councillor Luck?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just confirming you can hear me.
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. So thank you. I do have a few comments and questions, so I was hoping most of them would be asked before this time, so I wouldn't have my list, so bear with me. I guess I first wanted to comment on Mr. Loge's earlier comments. I did have the pleasure this year, well, maybe not the pleasure of building a house, but the pleasure of seeing firsthand our, the professionalism and expertise of your department and staff. So I just wanted to make a comment, you know, just how professional they were. So kudos to, to you and your staff. So in terms of, I guess, one of the questions is, there's some things I'm not seeing. And it could be just that they're buried kind of in other buckets. So I know some of the things we've talked about over the last year is putting crosswalks at the roundabout. Also, like, the bike lanes and marking some of the street painting hasn't been complete in a few years. I'm just wondering if that is in the plans for this coming year, as well as sweeping. And then also, we've done a lot of discussion, or have had a lot of discussion over the last year about Gondola Point. And I didn't, you know, I guess I'm just looking for the rationale of why none of that would be happening this coming fiscal year. So that's one question. I'm wondering, I guess, maybe I'll ask them in stages, if I may, just to make it easier to kind of follow along, if you could maybe address those first.
Sure thing, Your Worship. Thank you, Councillor Luck, for the positive comments for the, for the Building Inspection Group. They do work hard. And they, they had positive things to say about yourself and, and former Councillor Luck as well with the process. You're very gracious in, in the process. With respect to the crosswalk at the roundabout, if, if we recall the summer, I think the CAO spoke about the DTI work and paving it. They just finished it in the fall of the year. We did not get an opportunity to work with them on that paving. Right now, it's, it's a case of painting it and seeing if the paint lasts through the winter. Our paint crews are probably at the last stages of ability to put paint down that'll stick. We can't obviously put it down in the rain, and the fall weather sort of impacts that. We have to get the optimal situation. So quite frankly, this summer is the workload really impacted us, the ability to get the crosswalks and the bicycle lane signals, symbols down. And so, so at this stage of the game, it's, it's a wait and see if we get a good weather day, whether we can go in there. It's sort of an outstanding work order that we have, and we'll be trying to get that if we can. Fortunately, if we don't get the appropriate conditions, then it'll be a priority for the spring of the year when we do get back to dry asphalt conditions. With, with regards to the Gondola Point Road corridor, we have a Gondola Point Road corridor study that's, we're, we're, we're in the last stages of completing. We've received a condition assessment report, a few alternative designs and costing options. The consultants have sought input from the fire department, and, and they will be reaching out to the Traffic Division of the Police Department for some of the alternative layouts and streetscapes that would be proposed to council. I would anticipate in the next month, we would come back to council with a draft report, and that would go out for public comment and input. But it would come to council first, where we're looking at some different scenarios. Sort of the status quo, a one-lane, two-lane approach, what type of a pedestrian network we would have there. So the, the, there was in our initial draft of the budget about a $400,000 allocation for the Gondola Point Road for Phase 1. But we felt that at this time, where we didn't have specific design recommendations, it would be, we may find ourselves sitting on this thing at the end of the year before council goes through the input process to have a design that would be acceptable to everyone. So we decided to hold off on that particular and make it a priority for the '24 budget campaign. That would also give us a feel for the rest of the infrastructure on the Gondola Point Road. We are working on lift station number five. We have a tender package ready to go right now. That's the station is at the bottom of Sunnybank. And we also have two other stations in between the Rossay Boundary and that Station 5 that have to be renovated, upgraded. And at this stage, they are 100% dependent on gas tax and infrastructure funding. And where we're at the end of this round of, of funding, the Build Canada funds, we, we're really waiting to see what our allocations will be for the next five years, decide if we continue with the program where we do a pump station every other year, and then in the between years, we focus on either streets or water. So realistically, the reason that we did not put the Gondola Point Road on this particular is it's just there's too many unknowns to be able to proceed. And we would really like to have councils input, because there could be some significant changes to that streetscape, depending on the philosophy that council wants to take on the Gondola Point Road. If we leave it as a collector road, vehicle-centric, then it may be a little easier. But if there's any level of, of AT that we want to introduce, it's really going to impact on the available widths for traffic in that particular area. Hopefully, that answers your questions, Councillor Luck.
Yes, it does. I still have another question, if that's okay.
Sure thing.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I guess I'll ask, I have two other ones. I'll ask them and then let you address them. Just some clarity around Millennium Drive. I'm glad that that was brought up. You had mentioned that you're going to be doing a small section, and that section wouldn't be really, you know, it wouldn't impact the future design. And I guess I just want to have some reassurance that, only because, of course, you know, as you know, with AT, once you potentially add, you know, curb and gutter and concrete structures like sidewalks, it's a lot harder to widen streets and things like that. So I'm just kind of looking for some clarity on, I guess, insurance that whatever we do at the beginning of Millennium Drive is going to incorporate all the things that we've talked about over the last year in terms of safe, you know, kind of not as car-centric versus people-centric, you know, on foot as well as on bike, because I know that's a big connector. And right now, it's not a super safe street for anyone that's not in a car. And I guess the second part to my question is, I know that we can only control what we can control in our town, so we only own half of that, and then we turn into a subdivision. But have we been in talks with Rossay to give them the heads up? Because it would be fabulous if they also saw the importance so that we can continue that street, you know, into kind of neighboring communities. And then my second comment question is the sidewalk that was brought up earlier on Quispamsis Road. I was really happy to hear that you're looking at various solutions for that. My concern is the width of that street, and I have seen children bike to school to and from, which is wonderful. They are using that, depending on, I guess, if you're going down Quispamsis Road, they're using the left-hand bike lane to go to and from, and I know that's against the Motor Vehicle Act. They're supposed to be driving with traffic. But it is wide enough that I've seen kids driving the other way. So I just would want to make sure that, again, before we start putting concrete structures, because then it really limits in terms of widening out streets and making sure they're safe for people other than cars, that, you know, there's that... Yeah, I, I think you had mentioned about using the, the wing plow and looking at different solutions so that, you know, everyone can get to where they want to go safely. But then also, in terms of making sure it's clear in the winter, we're able to do that at, you know, in a cost-effective manner. So I'm just wondering if you could speak to those points. Thanks.
Sure thing, Your Worship. Through you. The Millennium Drive intersection, what we're looking at in that area is to maximize the use of the available land that's there. And it is a congested area. Part of the issue that we have is that the commercial properties have encroached, you know, rightfully so, they're out onto their, their streetscape, their signage, their parking that require their in-and-out lanes. So we will be restricted to working within that right-of-way. So I don't anticipate that we will narrow down the streetscape. We'll probably make sure that we leave enough space, and if it's hatched out or somehow not allocated for vehicle traffic right off the bat, it's going to be our intent, so that when the time comes, and if there's some additions to be made from a AT perspective, we can convert an existing municipal right-of-way or asphalt surface, whatever it might be, to that. So your, your point about not prejudicing the future development is well taken. That's the intent of that particular design. For us, and, and you mentioned it, and I think we mentioned it in the, in the earlier parts of the presentation, the level of control from a pedestrian safety area is, is, is mind-numbing. When you go down there sometimes, and the backlog of traffic and how far they back into the lights, we've got to be able to design it appropriately. So that's going to be the first point of, of issue that we deal with. So, so it is, it is, we're taking into account that particular area so that we don't prejudice the future trail network in that particular area and beyond. With respect to the beyond part in, in the town of Rossay, at this stage, I'm not aware of any discussions from our engineering perspective. I know that Community Services Group generally meets with Rossay counterparts on a, on a, on a irregular basis, you know, from time to time, and they discuss points of common interest. I can't speak to whether they've brought that up or not, and I know, Your Worship, has talked to the mayor in Rossay and, and sort of identified some of the priorities at that high level. So, so the initial discussions are there. When the time comes that we introduce an AT network plan or a phasing plan from my previous projects, from my previous projects, they are going to be a stakeholder that we engage when the time comes for us to develop a phasing plan. So long short is, we've had minimal contact or irregular contact. Long answer is, when the time comes, that we will identify them as a stakeholder and we'll ensure they get their comments and observations. And finally, the Quistam Sis Road, the sidewalk, again, really, it's looking at a problem, ensuring that we have enough funding to address the questions that arose. We don't want to push pedestrians or bicycles into ongoing traffic where at all possibly we want to avoid that. The goal at this stage, as I spoke a little earlier, is to control where they cross so that the vehicles and the pedestrians have a defined area that they can interact so that there all of a sudden somebody's not popping out of nowheres. Now, that's not having said, you know, hopefully, the students are young enough that they follow the rules of the road and actually walk along the sidewalk or walk along the crosswalk and they're not like some of the high school students that walk six across and cross the street wherever they want. So but the intent is to control that as best we can and make it as safe as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Luck. Thank you, Mr. Loge. Are there any other questions for Mr. Loge on this? I do not see any, so I'm going to invite you to continue, Mr. Loge.
Thank you, Your Worship. The next side of the presentation is going to deal with the utility side. It's the less sexy side of Public Works and Infrastructure. It's that stuff that's underground. But we like to say, and I think I've said it here before, is if it's working and it's underground, you don't see it and you can still turn your water on or flush your toilet and it goes away. We're doing our job and I think that's the most important part. When the stuff literally hits the fan, then that's when we start to worry and make sure that we can address it as soon as we can. The general utility budget that we have is, the divisions are there. We've got the well field area, that's the one division. The treatment for water, the pumping stations and the water system itself. The system is a cost recovery and that is the user, it's a user pay type of a system. So our capital expansion, any of the operating funds that we do undertake have to be driven by the revenues that we have, you know, with some offset from generally our operating budgets and things like that. But it is a user-based type of a system, so we have to be able to justify within certain limits the services that we offer. On the sewer side, you know, we deal with the infrastructure. That's the pipe network in the ground, the manholes, things like that, force mains. The lift stations, as I says, you know, those pump stations that get the wastewater from one level to another and then the treatment of that effluent that we have to meet the provincial and federal standards for wastewater discharge into the receiving streams. When we look at the budgets that we're proposing, it is generally about a 9% increase overall. Bulk of that is about 20% included in that utility administration, which is the administration of that whole operations. The operating side, the first two halves of the presentation there, really deal with the boots on the ground, so to speak, making sure that the stuff is working the way it should. There are no real significant light item changes in most of the divisions. When we look at our water system, there's a slight decline in repairs from the M and R. And realistically, that's after we had undertaken the reservoir recoding. We had last year introduced a one-time cost to upgrade some of the pumps and controls. So that was reflected in last year's budget and it's no longer required, so we've dropped that this year. There's some minor increase to electricity, which we're all seeing, whether we're turning on light at the house or whether we're pumping water. So there's a cost that's being passed on to us. We're looking at a regular review of the water distribution and planning study. And quite often, to the same point about sidewalks, the question is, when can we bring water to the subdivisions in the town of Quistam Sis? And what we have is, we have a phased program that CBCL had done for us a few years back. And when we recall, the investment at the time was in the order, you know, from 30 to 60 million bucks, depending on the approach that you took and the phasing that you took. That involved things like additional water towers spread across the town, the different loops of the town and depending on how they were phased in. So for us, right now, it's a case of balancing, is there demand? Where should we plan next? Is there fiscal capacity to put that in place? Are there grants enabling us to do this? And at this stage of the game, we don't have that fiscal capacity to undertake a massive water expansion program. So what we're looking right now is, are there expansion areas of convenience? Things that enable us to provide a better service, smaller loops, smaller extensions that have genuine immediate return. I think the next few areas that you'll see in the town will be just a looping off on Millennium Drive and the expansion of the water on Hampton Road. Before we get designated highway money from the province, we'll see water come down the Hampton Road. And then what that'll do in turn will develop properties here, the vacant properties on the Hampton Road, the commercial properties that are there. So those are going to be our priority items in the short term. But at this stage of the game, the budget is just not there to make immediate recommendations. We want to make sure that we put all of our water and sewer in the ground before we pave streets. So that's going to be the other approach that we take when we propose a street to be paved. We'll go back and say, is there an opportunity to either improve or upgrade or install brand-new water and sewer infrastructure? And that's one of the decision factors that we'll undertake. On the sewer side, the same idea, and there's really not a lot of significant light item changes. The infrastructure, there's some savings on the M and R. Again, some of the one-time costs from pump replacements from last year, we didn't, we were able to save off that. We, obviously, the pumping is an electrical intensive type of a function. So the electricity costs are reflected in the pumping station's line. And same thing with treatment. Wastewater is a highly corrosive environment, very affects the pumps, parts and equipment quite drastically. And so there's a lot of money that we have to invest in replacing corroded-out, rusted-out parts and equipment. And so those are the main functions that we pull into. When we come to the utility administration side, where we saw that largest part of the increase, what we're doing in that is we're incorporating an asset management plan to the utility department. This is condition assessment, risk analysis, and we're adding to the town-wide asset management plan that we already have in place. Unfortunately, this will be our third time trying to go to FCM and I met with them recently and they've indicated that we don't want to be too greedy and let other people have a chance at the pot. So they're not approving third-time grants at this stage. They are quite, honestly though, they're appreciative of the efforts that we've taken. Quistam Sis continues to be a model for other smaller communities on how to approach an asset management implementation plan. I did a quick interview with some of the FCM folks that were putting together an article for Renew Magazine and spent a half hour with them speaking about our asset management plan, our climate change initiatives linked to the asset management plan, how we make a business case for an asset management plan that's linked to our climate change initiatives. So hopefully, we'll get some good press in Renew Magazine and maybe get a mention in the town, for the town as an example. The FCM person that I spoke to was very, was very positive about the steps that we've taken so far. And I put a plug in for if we're not going to be able to get a third-time grant for actual asset management. Hopefully, there'll be a consideration down the road when we want to implement an asset management software system to the town. And he hedged his bets and said, well, maybe, maybe not. But at least we put the bug in their ear that this is an area that's going to require significant investment and it would be very nice to see FCM come to the table with some funds provided by the federal government to help us implement a way to manage all of the asset management that we're doing in the town. So this particular administration side of the budget, there's $75,000 to do that asset management plan for the water and sewer side. We're fortunate in that the asset management system for the water and sewer is very, I won't say easy, but it'll be a little bit more direct in that there's so many templates out there that are already available. We won't have to reinvent the wheel and we have a relatively young system. So we're looking at condition assessments that are really time-based, may not be getting involved in very destructive type of testing. But what we'll see is a lot of risk analysis, load questions, growth potential questions. So I think that'll really help us in the long-range plans when we look at our growth in the community. It's the same as the operation side and the work side. The fleet is really, you know, $14,000 cost for the utility side of things. You know, $4,000 bucks on the fuel, M and R is about $4,000. Insurance is a surprise me, $6,100 increase and that's being sprayed out throughout the town. On the IT side, you know, as always, we run a SCADA system that is dependent on licensing and software and technical equipment, so there's a slight increase as we reflect that in the budget. The sewer department proposed capital. We're seeing, one, two, three, four, four main areas, count my fingers, four. There's a fleet. We're replacing the last of the fleet that needs to be replacing on the utility side. There's an operator's truck. It was a 2011 vintage year. I guess vintage is like a fine wine. Some of them age well, some of them don't. This one has aged to get us beyond our 10- to 12-year life frames or hopefully see this as a part of our package. On the utility collection side, we've been advised by the Department of Transportation and I think I've advised council that they are looking at revamping the Highway One, all of the collection systems, the stormwater management system under the highway. And back in 1986, the town partnered with the province and we installed a sewer line from the parkside trailers, the Mobile Home Parks, over to our collection system. And at the time, the opportunity was there to run a sewer collector line through a stormwater management line. So we've had a stormwater line in a storm sewer line for the last 43 years. And they wanted out. And we said that we couldn't take it out because it's a big project. And what they've asked us to do is do a review on when, what would be involved, what would be, what the cost would be. They would not guarantee that they would come to the table with any assistance on the project. And the only commitment that I would give them in turn then was that we would look at it and I could not commit to any funds from the town. So we'll see where this study goes, but we really do need to know, is the collector line in the right place? Should it be replaced? Is it going to require a drilling underneath the highway? Should we decommission it and look at a collection line that goes down towards the industrial park, down to the Elliott Road area to that pump station? What would that cost be? We're going to look at all the parameters and decide how the approach to be taken. So this is a seed study for that particular work. On the wastewater pumping station sides, if I spoke a little earlier about that pump station number five, which is at the bottom of Sunnybank on the Gondola Point Road, we are at a tender stage. We've done our design briefs. We've done the investment or the investigations in the potential costs. Last year's budget, we identified $1.73 million. Our consultants are telling us, like they're telling everybody else, the costs, we can expect the costs to go up. They've identified a potential budget of $1.4 million. So we've asked in this budget to allocate additional $750,000 to that project so that we can go to tender and not have to, well, there's nothing we could do. If we went to tender and we couldn't do it per budget, it's not, there's no way to cut anything out of that. You can't do one pump, half a pump. This is, it's an integral project that requires the funds that we've allocated to. So we've asked for that in this particular capital program. And then the last item on the Wildwood Pump Station just down the road from the Bike Park, the Millennium Cycle Park, there's issues with the drainage and the entrance. And we're just looking at some work in that particular area to help protect our investment, the infrastructure there so that we don't see water running into the wetland or watering against the building or eroding so that it doesn't make it for a safe area, an operating area. The utility budget, there's also on Ridgewood Park, there's $100,000 on the water side. What that is, is there's the Ridgewood Park Water System has a uranium treatment option that the province is requiring. They've identified a new standard for the uranium present in drinking water. Basically, they backdoored it and as they do with a lot of standards, now they say, yes, it used to be good, but we've changed our mind or the studies are showing that we've got to reallocate. And so they've advised us that we have to, through the Department of Health, they've advised us that we've got to introduce uranium removal treatment to the water on Ridgewood Park. And we have a design in place and we're going through that process now for what type of treatment options. We have some money identified in the previous budget and for the initial investigations and design, now this is hopefully take us to that tender point this summer. So those are the main highlights of the utility budget. Again, it's underground. It's not as flashy as everything else, but is integral to the community and the way we run our community. If there's any questions or comments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Loge. I will open it up for questions from council. Deputy Mayor Schreier, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Mr. Loge. The water department, the Ridgewood Park system. So the Department of Health are saying that the uranium content is too high? Well, no. Are they saying it's too high?
What they're saying is, our, 10 years ago, the standard, the water quality met all the standards. Province-wide, they've changed certain things. It used to be a water test, you could get 10 and 10, you know, back to, now it's 0-0. Same thing they've done with certain metals and heavy metals, things like that. They've adjusted their levels that are acceptable. What they've said to us is, we've introduced this new standard, your drinking water, it meets it, because what we can do is we blend two wells and we can bring our levels down. What they would like to see is rather than blending water, they get like two different sources and to get the level down, they'd rather have a treatment so that way if something happens to one well or the other, it's a guaranteed level that we can meet. Currently, we meet the standards and by blending our water, there are going to be occasions where if one well is pulling more than the other, it might peak. Their, Department of Health is satisfied with the efforts we've taken so far. They are asking though, to go to that next level, which is removal of that particular element out of the water system.
Good. Thank you. And my other question is, where to go on the, oh, the study for the sewer line under the highway?
Yes.
So that sewer line is the treatment line for the Mobile Park? Is there two, there's two of them in there, right?
There are three parks over there?
Three parks.
And it's the collector line, so all of their systems, anybody that, the two out of the three run to the town system. The third one runs to their own treatment facility, facility is a loose term. It's a green pond. But two of the systems come to us. So it's just basically the collection line, so that takes it through our pump stations. It takes it to the treatment facility here, Longwood, but it's the collection line.
Okay. And so that's just a study that we're going to do in the...
Province, basically, it's the golden rule. If they have the goal, they make the rules. And they say, at some point, we want that line removed. And I said, unless you're paying for it, I can't tell you when it's going to come out. And it's a stalemate at some point, but I said, the best I can commit is I'll take to council the fact that we're going to be looking at it as a, what are our options and then come back with recommendations. So we've, we've come to a sort of a gentleman's agreement at this stage that we'll see what the options are before we commit to anything.
Thank you for the questions, Deputy Mayor Schreier. Onto Counselor Thompson, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just wanted to clarify the distribution center, the distribution in Ridgewood Park system. That was a private water. It's not connected to our overall water system.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. Any further questions for Mr. Loge? I don't see any. Mr. Loge, just looking to...
Spots before lunch and after lunch, so I guess I'll have to make the best of it. So when we look at the engineering and the utility side, really, we've got an overall view. We want to continue with our asset management approach. What do we have? Where is it? You know, what are the next steps we have to do? We want to stay ahead of it. Right now, we are exceeding the provincial requirements that enable us to be eligible for grants. So that's our goal, to stay ahead of that curve that the province has established to make sure that we can get money from the different levels of government. We want to make sure that we continue to manage our assets in what kind of shape they're in. When should it be repaired? At what time? How much is it going to cost? That way, we want to make sure that we end up with a proper level of service. And we're taking councils through that level of service exercise in the next couple of months once we have time with you all to be able to pick your brains as to what you feel is the promises that we should be making and keeping to the residents of the community. So that's going to be our next steps and our focus for '23. We're going to be looking at the wastewater asset management, as I talked a little bit about earlier. We're looking at that phasing plans for the asset management of our AT and rec department and the transportation master plan and the ad hoc committee meshing all that together. So I just want to reiterate that one. Obviously, we're going to take advantage of grant opportunities when we can. The Director of Community Services is a great example of holding out, finding money, making money, come out of nowheres. She's amazing when it comes to things like that. And I hope to live up to her example, finding some grant money for Ritchie Lake and for the AT... And I hope to live up to her example, finding some grant money for Ritchie Lake and for the AT program. And uh, I think the big thing for us going forward and, and working with Jason and, and Steve behind me here is it's gonna be uh, ensuring that we can identify whatever opportunities we can with our fleet analysis study. And I would expect that we're gonna come back with some substantial recommendations to council on how we operate our fleet, how we charge it out, what are the standards that we should be living to, uh, and, and seeing what is out there in the industry. So uh, stay tuned. I think that's gonna be an interesting discussion when the time comes and it may warrant uh, uh, more than twenty minutes. That's it, your worship. Unless there's a question as a follow-up, I, I didn't mean to take up that much time, but I still have ten minutes according to the podium timer here, so.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, if you don't believe there are any further questions, so I'm going to invite our actual C A O, Mr. Aaron Kennedy to the podium, please, for uh, further detail on uh, the proposed twenty twenty-three budz- budgets from external sources. Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you very much, your worship, and hello again, members of council. Um, I'm just going to go through these external sources relatively quickly. Um, our police, fire, library, uh, regional services and the new mandates, waste management, COMEX, civic relations, sponsorships and grants. And at this stage of the game, certainly it is within council's purview to make changes to those uh, especially police, fire and library services. But if you do that, um, at this stage, it certainly causes an awful lot of dominoes to fall because of our shared services with the town of Rosay. So those three budgets have been uh, vetted at the Joint Finance Committee last month. And uh, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, uh, Counselor Miller is the Chair of our Finance Committee and Counselor Olson, who was pinch hitting for Counselor Thompson that day, um, have already gone through that at uh, great length and great detail. So uh, hopefully, uh, there are no issues with those particular files uh, here today. Um, Envision St. John, the Regional Growth Agency, was certainly a topic of great debate um, throughout this process of local governance reform. Um, your worship, you were one of the leaders of the charge to ensure that Envision stayed the same way um, through the duration of its five-year contract because economic development and tourism are now part of the mandated services under local governance reform and fall under the responsibility of the Fundy Regional Services Commission. Um, obviously, as you can see on that chart, our costs uh, have gone up exponentially since twenty twenty-one, all the way up to twenty twenty-five, but we did indeed sign up for that. Um, it was probably the better part of two years um, with a variety of stakeholders and the administrators and elected officials trying to hash that deal out. And eventually, they did. Um, so we were adamant uh, that it should stay the way that it is despite the fact uh, that the province was mandating regional economic development and tourism under these R S C mandates. And uh, the pitch that uh, your worship was making, uh, as well as at the administrative level, is that the province may be trying to bring communities of interest together in the other eleven regions of the province, but we were ahead of the game. We were ahead of the curve in the St. John region, so it didn't make any sense to tear something apart, which we knew that government officials all the way up as high as the premier were using as a, as a template for good governance and good regional collaboration uh, in other parts of the province. It didn't make any sense to tear that down. So we really pushed to ensure that Envision would stay uh, in its current form. Governance structure may change somewhat because it does fall under the R S C, but our costs with that uh, do not go up. The new Regional Service Commission certainly has been uh, a challenge, to say the least, for everybody uh, involved with that. And certainly, this council at uh, one of our most recent meetings expressed uh, continued frustration uh, with this process, the moving goalposts and the changes in numbers and information as it was coming back and forth between us and the province. And uh, this does, I think, tie in as well to the discussion uh, that we had just briefly this morning when the treasurer talked about this non-residential rate. And I hate to use the term sinister, but it certainly is Machiavellian from the province's point of view, in my opinion, um, to basically say, we're cutting the provincial portion of the non-residential property tax and then you, the collective you as elected officials, not just here, but throughout the province, um, can pretty much deal with it. Uh, and you're the ones that can uh, raise the, the rate from one point five factored to one point six or one point seven or one point five five, as Counselor Miller mentioned this morning. Um, ultimately, there's only one taxpayer, so it's, i- it's easy for the province to say, well, we've done this and wipe their hands and say, now it's up to you. It's not particularly fair, uh, but that's really what's happened in this. A- and throughout this process, again, when we talk about the numbers that change, we had been led to believe through documentation from the province that we were netting probably about a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Um, netting about one twenty compared to what we received through our core funding in twenty twenty-two. And I mentioned this morning that that has been decreased by twenty percent as the province moves forward to phase that out. Um, it's really more closer to about eighty-six thousand dollars that we're gaining this year. That is all heading off uh, to the R S C level. So it's basically the province is stuffing a little bit into our left pocket and taking a heck of a lot more out of our right pocket. So I think it's important that we keep on with that message that these changes and these additional costs are because the province is downloading provincial services onto the regions. And ultimately, the regions receive their funding from the municipalities within that region. So, um, when you see those numbers on the Regional Service Commission slide, uh, that's where that comes from. I did mention sort of the police, fire and library services. Uh, they were there for your perusal as part of this hundred and eighty-two page uh, document. Um, an increase there in the Police Department budget of about eight point one percent. Fire is up uh, twelve point nine four percent. And of course, we are working on Fire Station Two, which uh, serves primarily the Chris Pam Sis area and the old uh, Chris Pam Sis Civic Center. Uh, the Canterbury Cases Library uh, is up two point two eight percent. And I think we all knew um, what an asset the library was to this community, but it was really magnified when they had the issue in January and the flood uh, that occurred with the busted pipe uh, just across the street. And how the community sort of galvanized and wanted to ensure that, you know, the books were safe and that there was no damage to the assets within that facility. Um, and that it was more sort of the infrastructure and the time that it took to get back up and running. And they were doing sort of door-to-door dr- uh, drive-through service out front there. So, um, kudos to Nora Emerson, Emerson and her staff over there for ensuring that the library was able to uh, open in the summer. And I think it just reinforced uh, what we already knew that the Canterbury Cases Public Library is a very uh, important and valuable asset for the residents of Chris Pam Sis and Rosay. Uh, waste management, and again, these numbers, sometimes when you're digging down deep into the budget, it's a, it's a little bit complicated because of the way the Regional Service Commission has come back and said, well, now economic development and Envision used to be a separate item, now it's part of this. Um, and the tipping fees are basically, you know, more of an estimate than the actual uh, definitive cost. Um, one thing that we should point out uh, going into twenty twenty-three is that our uh, contract with Fero expires at the end of twenty twenty-three as well. And obviously, they're the contractors that do garbage, compost and recycling collection in Chris Pam Sis and Rosay and uh, lots of other places around as well. So that uh, contract is up for um, negotiation, renegotiation by the end of twenty twenty-three. There's no change to the budget for public transit and the COMEX service. Um, this has been something else that's been talked about uh, at length around this uh, council table for many, many years. Um, that is now a shared service with the town of Rosay. There is one bus um, that goes in and out and in and out, um, twice a day into the city of St. John. Um, if you see within the budget itself, uh, the, the public transit line does say it's just over ninety-six thousand dollars. That includes the snow removal uh, around the bus stops and that sort of thing and other maintenance that's required there. So um, for the most part, that's pretty much the same. But the actual COMEX subsidy to the city of St. John uh, remains at seventy-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Um, we have tried repeatedly. We've had, uh, your worship has been on the bus and other members of council have been on the bus. And we've had radio stations live reporting from the bus, which is actually kind of neat when they do that in the morning to try and encourage folks. And um, there's no question that the people who use the bus, they love it. Um, but the, the question is to try and get other people to come on. And I think the last time we were on, uh, someone said to these folks, hey, if you like the bus so much, bring two friends tomorrow and that will ensure that the bus is here um, for the duration. But I think um, this council has shown that we, that you remain committed to that. Um, and hopefully, eventually, things will change as people go back to work and are not working at home as much. If that's the case, that uh, they see the value of the bus. And even as our community becomes uh, more diverse and that those types of uh, public transit um, requirements are met. Uh, and the other thing to keep in mind with the Regional Service Commission is that there is a, a public transit mandate under that as well. Um, and the city is moving to this on-demand uh, type of public transit service too. So we'll see how those things affect us as we move into uh, twenty twenty-three. Under the civic relations, sponsorships and grants, there is an increase there of uh, just over thirteen thousand dollars compared to twenty twenty-two. What I think uh, is noteworthy on that, uh, and the Finance Committee deserves to be lauded for their uh, diligence and working uh, on that particular uh, file, is that the uh, requests that we received for twenty twenty-three um, from a variety of uh, you know, great community-based organizations, some out here, some in the city and some, you know, serving a regional basis. Um, they nearly doubled. They were up to uh, about ninety-nine thousand dollars. So um, it was uh, great work by the Finance Committee to get that down to, I think, what was a more manageable number of fifty-seven thousand two hundred and ten. And that was approved by council unanimously at our last uh, council meeting last week. So how do we stack up? Um, this particular budget that's before you today does have a tax rate of one dollar twenty-eight four nine cents, and that is a decrease of three point one four cents on the uh, tax rate, as I mentioned this morning. Uh, and you can see uh, the other tax rates from twenty twenty-two where our dollar thirty-one sixty-three uh, matches um, quite favorably with those other communities of somewhat similar size. D E P uh, is, you know, a little bit bigger, but the other three, uh, despite uh, two of them being cities, are very similar in population. Um, so w- we think, you know, traditionally that this council um, has done a tremendous job in trying to maintain the tax rate while still providing uh, the services that uh, our residents uh, expect. And I think historically, we've talked as well about how that's uh, that's hurt us in terms of uh, equalization, funding and being grouped with Rosay and River View, that all of the funding went to one particular municipality. And that's going on to about, oh, ten years since that particular funding scheme was uh, was put forth by the provincial government. Uh, ultimately, River View's seen its funding decrease, but um, in terms of equalization, we haven't received any. And obviously, now with the changes that the province is implementing, we are never going to see uh, any equalization funding from uh, the provincial government. So, that's basically it. Uh, the next slide is the pertinent one that the treasurer will uh, show you. What does this all mean? Uh, but in the interim, if there are any questions for me, certainly, your worship, I'm happy to field them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kennedy, for that uh, overview of the budget up to this point. Uh, we have a question coming from Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Uh, Mr. Kennedy, the, if Mrs. St. John, um, the increase of twenty-nine percent, that's going from two nineteen to two eighty-four. Were, those were agreements that were signed back in two thousand and twenty, were they? So, is there any um, sort of oversight on, to their budget that it, or is it written in stone that it's automatically going to two eighty-four? Was there a budget submitted that we would look at and say, well, you know, what about your rents? What about this? And will they work out of the office of the new Regional Service Commission? That might reduce any costs.
Thank you, your worship, for that question. Through you to the Deputy Mayor. Uh, the Envision Board is comprised currently of uh, inside directors, and those are the uh, C A Os from the city of St. John, uh, Grand Bay, Westfield, Rosay, Hampton and myself. Uh, and then it's also um, an eclectic mix of uh, community leaders, I would say, uh, representing, they're not really representing uh, their employers, but they are employed by some prominent um, businesses within the greater St. John region as well. So Envision is staying on the sixteenth floor of the Brunswick Tower on Tremaine Street. Um, we do know that um, the R S C is looking for some additional office space. And uh, Mayor Grant, who is the Director on the R S C, uh, made a rather pertinent comment last week at the R S C meeting saying, why does everything have to be here at Crane Mountain or in the city? What about uh, moving out here? So we've been uh, exploring some opportunities for some office space in the valley, either in Chris Pam Sis or in Rosay. And it's uh, my understanding that they'll be going to an R F P probably fairly soon because they do need additional space for their new mandates and the new people that'll be working out of there. Um, but the Envision budget, um, you know, obviously, if they go try to move to a higher level, that's the funding that the town of Chris Pam Sis is committed to up to twenty twenty-five. Um, and in terms of, um, you know, there's a million dollars that's uh, comes to that organization as well from the provincial government decision that was made by the Department of Post-Secondary Education Training and Labor a couple of years ago. So that funding is there. There are some other funding mechanisms as well. So uh, basically, the, the town of Chris Pam Sis and the other members are committed to that number. And as I mentioned earlier, your worship, I think you were leading the char- I don't think, I know you were leading the charge to ensure that Envision stayed in its current state. Um, because if that hadn't been the case, because of the provincial government's local governance reform, making economic development and tourism a mandated service, our costs for economic development and tourism, which is right now Envision, would have gone up more so than they're going up on the previously signed contract in twenty twenty-three.
Uh, uh, yes. And, and actually, just further to that, I believe it would have doubled, actually. So we, it, we would have been up to about four hundred thousand plus.
Thank you for that explanation. So, on the, your sheet, that new Regional Service Commission, the Regional Service Commission line, ninety-five thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars. That does not include capital, nor does it, that's only the five new mandated. I think it was five, wasn't it, that they mandated us with? Is that figure reflective of the five and not including capital?
So it, it does include the capital. The capital right now is only on four of the five facilities. The Imperial Theater is not owned by the city, so it does not reflect capital on the Imperial. And we are working very hard, and I wouldn't say behind the scenes, we're quite in, in front of the curtain, uh, trying to get the Trade and Convention Center taken off of that uh, entirely as a regional facility based on the new definition that the province has come up with for uh, sport, recreational and cultural facilities. We flat out do not believe that uh, the Trade and Convention Center meets that definition. Uh, and the mayor and her counterparts in Rosay and Hamp- in uh, Rosay and Hampton said as much in a letter to Minister Relai on Friday afternoon. So, uh, it does include those capital costs. And again, um, as this council discussed at the last meeting, uh, and I believe the motion was put forward by Counselor Olson, um, we're interested in seeing officially, you know, what the city has uh, done over the previous five years to see that uh, there was some capital, that there were some capital investments in those facilities and they weren't just waiting um, for this opportunity that um, other people would be coming in and paying capital. Um, and then obviously, looking ahead, and the city has provided a, a ten-year uh, capital um, wish list uh, that includes the Trade and Convention Center. And over the ten years, that uh, is to the tune of seventeen million dollars, so one point seven a year for each of the next ten years, on average.
By, that Regional Service Commission line of ninety-five thousand five forty-nine includes the capital? Does it?
I'll defer to the Treasury, your worship.
Um, through your, through you, your worship, um, yes, it does. Um, so, just a quick summary of the regional services. So we've had a variety of versions. In our version six, our total fees um, were to be one point three eight nine. That included the new pieces. Um, it included the economic development piece. It included some um, of the allocation of the community funding and equalization grant that we were supposed to um, to receive. So, so what that is, is that it's that one point three eight nine million that we have in our budget. We budget separately for our tipping fees, so that number is backed out. We have Envision in another place within our budget, so we have backed that out as well. Um, and then what was the other line on that one? And the regional facilities, uh, the operating another um, section. So, what that is, is that is the net number for the regional services, accounting for everything else we already have in the budget, that matches to their version six document that was the latest document that we've had submitted to us. And capital is included in the regional facilities piece. The number i- in the Regional Service Commission budget is four point eight million. The operating is about like three point three or something. So it's about one point four five two million in capital. I'm on my backup sheet. No, you can see, see that. So that's what I'm telling you is that it's one point three eight nine, backed out with what we already have in our budget. That ninety-five number is kind of our piece to kind of balance off our entire contribution to the R S C.
Thank you. Uh, did you have a question, Counselor Thompson? I, I just want to make sure your mic is on when you are asking.
No, I still don't understand what, I'm, I'm looking at this, right? So the, the Regional Service Commission twenty twenty-three budget is ninety-five thousand, five hundred and forty-nine.
If someone just, sorry to interrupt, could someone, I, I can't see what documents anyone's talking about. Could you just refer to where you're talking so I can follow along, please? Thank you.
Counselor Luck, that would be page one, two, seven on your, on the package that you would have received, page one, two, seven?
Of the paper.
And it's called New Regional Service Commission. Counselor Thompson, did you get your question?
Yeah, I, I'm still a little confused with the, the, I, I understand the percentage change. So the total for the Regional Service Commissions that we pay is ninety-five thousand, five hundred and forty-nine in this budget?
It would be the total.
No, I'm, I'm just breaking this down, this page, right?
Yeah. So the, the total would be the total that's on there in the yellow. That is kind of all of the mandates for Regional Service Commission. All I'm saying is that we have that in different parts throughout our budget. So we have Envision on a separate line, which is included in the RSC. We have the operating costs for the regional facilities commission that we've had in our budget for a number of years. That's in another spot.
No, no, I'm, I'm just talking about this page right here.
Yes.
This, this, just this page. And the, the total is one point four eight seven million.
Yes.
So my point is, is that, is the Regional Service Commission, what we pay for the Regional Service Commission is ninety-five thousand, five hundred and forty-nine?
No, it would be the one point four. Million. That is what we will be paying through the RSC.
I'm just saying what's broken down. It says for the Regional Service Commission, and then there's Regional Facilities Commission, operating, it says, solid waste tipping fees, and Envision Saint John. And the, and the total is one point four, almost one point five.
Yes, so the, the. Sorry. The total would be about the one point four seven. Our tipping fees will be based on actual. And all I'm saying is that the version six of the Regional Service Commission budget had Quispam sis at about one point three eight nine. Million in costs, which, if you look at the one point four, they have a different number for their solid waste than we do. So really, our Regional Service Commission cost is going to be the one point four million that we have in the budget. And all we're saying is that there's one line item with the RSC that has ninety-five thousand. There's some for the regional facilities. There's some for our tipping fees. And there is some for the Envision in different places within our budget. But really, it, the costs are one point four with everything that's going to be under the Regional Service mandate.
Accurate? Sorry. These, these twenty-three, twenty twenty-three budget numbers that are here listed?
Yeah.
They total that one point four?
Yes.
Okay, so that's my question. I just wanted to know if each one of these was accurate as it is attached?
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. Thank you, Ms. Brandon. Going to Deputy Mayor Skryer, please.
Thank you, your worship, just to make the waters muddier. I just want, just thank you to the treasurer. So our total increase with the new reform, what we need to pay is an additional twenty-six percent, which equates to three hundred and six thousand dollars in additional monies that Quispam sis needs to pay towards the Regional Service Commission. We were already paying tipping fees. We were already paying the regional facilities operating. So we're an additional three hundred and six hundred thousand dollars. And Envision went up?
Yes, that's what I was going to say. So Envision kind of had gone up to last year, so part of that is, is in there. I think it was two eighty-four this year. I don't know. It was two nineteen. Yeah, so, so that is part of it there as well. And then plus the new services and stuff, and that's what's kind of in that ninety-five thousand number for the Regional Service Commission. But yes, those are our increased costs over two thousand and twenty-two with the new Regional Service Commission.
Thank you for the question, Deputy Mayor Skryer. Thank you for the explanation, our, to our treasurer, Krista Brandon. And are there any further questions for Mr. Kennedy? Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
In passing, before I finish up, the one thing to keep in mind that could turn things around a little bit more, the Regional Service Commission last Wednesday, and your worship, as a member of that commission as a director, voted against it, as did the other directors, unanimously rejected the budget. So at this point in time, we're not sure whether the minister is going to accept version six and impose it on the RSC, or if he's going to say, I want you to look at this again and send it back and make some changes. So that's still very much up in the air. So I think our Finance Department of Krista and Nancy and Leah deserve a, a lot of credit for trying to deal with that, as the treasurer mentioned, six versions of that budget. And Mark McLeod, who was here at one of our most recent meetings, the outgoing executive director of the, the FRSC, talked about how frustrating it was for them as well because they're taking these directions from the province that seem to be changing in a rather capricious manner. So I think everyone needs to be applauded for trying to deal with this council as well, as best as we can under these circumstances.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. We do have a couple of questions. Counselor Bigger, please.
Thank you, your worship. I regret not having been here for the last council meeting with relation to the approval of civic relations, sponsorships, and grants. There is, there is one line item on here that I, I wish I could advocate for a change on. And I don't know, just because the acting CAO did include that in this component of budget review, if this would be the, the right time to bring that up, or if, if that's sort of treading on everyone's patience too much. Okay.
You're certainly welcome to express your.
Okay, well, and to your point, Mr. Kennedy, I certainly do appreciate as well the effort that's been made to sort of regulate this overall and to, you know, make it fiscally very responsible. I just feel like I would be remiss, after having seen in person the wonderful work they do at Shining Horizons, I, I know that there had been a request made of, for ten thousand dollars, and we've approved a fifteen hundred dollar grant to them. And I do wish that there was some way that the council might consider sweetening that slightly to a twenty-five hundred dollar grant. I know that the equine therapy that they do with neurologically delayed and challenged people and the mental health services that they offer, they're entirely dependent upon private contributions, and they do marvelous work. And just as a fan of what they do, I wish I had been here to advocate for them. So I, perhaps I'm a little late to the game at this point, but I just would ask council to maybe consider that briefly. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger. And Counselor Olson.
Thank you, your worship. I guess, I don't know if, if I'm beating a dead horse, but is this supporting the capital costs now completed? I know the minister said that it's, it's not something that he's going to entertain. But with the, with the non-support from the Regional Service Commission itself, a lot of that non-support, I think, has to do with the capital coverage. And I'm just wondering if we should be pursuing that further.
Mr. Kennedy, would you like to reply?
Thank you, your worship. Counselor Olson, you're definitely preaching to the choir here on that one. But I think Minister Alain and his deputy minister have been quite clear, quite adamant that there's no wiggle room on that. I think that's actually a phrase that I, I read in the newspaper. I guess at the RSC level, and your worship as the director would be better equipped to answer this than I would, but if capital costs are to be included, I would suspect that at that level, there would be a debate as to what are legitimate capital costs and what need to be done in two thousand and twenty-three and what can be pushed back a year or two under the city's requests. So I suspect there would be some vigorous debating around that table at the RSC. But there's very little doubt that the province is going to impose capital costs on all of the Regional Service Commissions. And what's interesting is the fact that, as Counselor Olson knows quite well, and so do the other members of council, we're the only region that has this Regional Facilities Act in place that we've had since nineteen ninety-eight. So as this moves forward with the other eleven regions, the Fundy region will be the one with the most regional facilities as well. And when you look at the list, again, you wonder why would the Saint John Trade and Convention Center be included in our region, but the Frederton Convention Center, owned by the city, is not included as a regional facility in the capital region? That, to me, just doesn't, doesn't jive at all.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. We'll go to you, Counselor Miller.
Thank you, your worship. I guess on that question, I'd like to see what they classify as a regional facility. And I know I brought this up before, but if you look at our deficit of a Qplex, just our operating deficit's one point one million. We share Judic ID, we share Skate Canada, we share World Juniors, we give free swimming to everybody, we give free skating, we have a track that everybody uses, less than six percent of the people that use Qplex are ours. We actually have a convention center. We have the Telescope, we have the Saint John Vitos playing there. So I know we had the discussion briefly, but I'd like to see what the definition of a regional is, and I'd like to know why we aren't. It's kind of like you talked about looking for different places to, to rent from. Not everything has to be in Saint John. So it's just something that I'd like further clarification on because I know we asked for it, or it was asked for it to be removed. It was on there originally. But I need to understand what a regional facility definition is. So if somebody could share that with us, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you for your question, and I will turn the mic over to Mr. Kennedy again.
Yeah, I, I don't have that definition off the top of my head, other than the regional facilities are supposed to be sport, recreational, or, or cultural facilities. And one could argue that the Qplex fits that definition. I know that, your worship, you and I, and my counterparts at the CAO level, were quite surprised when we saw that sort of thrown onto a list that we were, under the impression the regional facilities were going to be reduced rather than added to. And certainly, there are lots of examples of, you know, similar to the Qplex. And Bactouch would be one that is not on the list. I don't believe in that region. So it's one of those things that we could certainly go back to the, the Regional Service Commission and go to the province and say we want to do, include the Qplex. That would change the governance structure without question. I think back to when this council made the decision in the early spring to support KV High School's prom committee by waiving the fees for the Qplex that night. I suspect something like that would be a little bit more challenging to, to get through if it had to go through a different sort of governance committee. I'm not sure why this council would want the town of Grand Bay Westfield with a, a vote as to how we want to operate the Qplex. That doesn't make sense to me. But if council wanted to pursue that, that certainly would be council's prerogative. So, yeah, we were surprised when the Qplex was included. Certainly, all of those things that, that Counselor Miller suggested are all valid. You know, the Saint John Vitos hockey team, we, we absconded with them from the Beaverbrook. I, I don't really think that that makes the, the Qplex a, a regional facility any more than if they were playing at the Beaverbrook. And I think we need to be careful if we start adding more on because there's a new rink going up in Hampton. The city, as Counselor Donovan had mentioned at a previous meeting, is toying with the idea of a fourplex, which I assume is going to be in the city limits, and I assume that they're going to be coming to the Regional Service Commission at some point, saying, well, we're going to mothball our existing arenas, and we want you to pay for this. Again, is a, is a fourplex in Saint John a regional facility? The fourplex in Moncton certainly isn't. So I think we have to compare apples to apples and not apples to bananas here. But if, if it's the will of council to, to move forward with the Qplex potentially as a regional facility, that would be the will of council, and we'll do what council directs us to do. But from a, a staff perspective, we think that there are certainly more pratfalls than benefits and something like that.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Counselor, did you have another follow-up question? Yes, go ahead, follow-up. Counselor Miller?
Thank you. I, I, I guess, I would rather it not be added, but it deserves to be there more than the TD station. So I think the TD station has to be removed. You can't go rent ice on the TD station. You can't go do the things you can do with the Qplex. So I agree with you, we'd like to have less than more. But I think TD, we are more of a, a regional center than the, the TD station. I think the TD station needs to be removed as well, not just the Trade and Convention. So that, that's kind of my point. We, I think, were more of one than, than the TD station. And I would, I, I agree. I'd rather have less people involved in everything, less government, the better. So I would, I would think TD station needs to get pulled out, too. That's, that's kind of my comment. That's why I brought that up. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. And certainly, the angle that I hear from you is that you were looking at the usage of a particular facility. So I will go now to Counselor Luck, who is online.
Thank you, your worship. I was actually going to kind of support some of Counselor Miller's comments. Just looking at kind of offsetting the costs that are going to be downloaded to us in, you know, over the next number of years. Not that we want to lose control of the Qplex, and I think that, you know, kind of comes out loud and clear in terms of our biggest concern. But at the same time, if it falls into a definition of, you know, a regional facility, I think that, you know, again, kind of weighing the pros and cons, and I guess, you know, it goes to discussion is, you know, I'd like to see a bit more discussion on the pros and cons because, you know, looking at the number of, or the amount of money that we're going to be paying in capital costs and operational costs for facilities that are all situated in Saint John, you know, having the Qplex as part of the regional facilities grouping would definitely help offset, you know, at, at the end of the day, what's, you know, what the residents are going to end up having to pay out of their pocket. So I'm not sure, you know, in terms of, would something like that have to go to a motion in terms of us exploring it more? Or do we just ask for it to be, you know, looked at? But I do think it is something, you know, and I know that it's a bit time-sensitive, but I think Counselor Miller makes a, a number of really good points in terms of, you know, what is a regional facility? And, you know, some of his examples really gets you thinking about, you know, that specific venue. And if there are ways of offsetting the costs that we're going to be paying for Saint John infrastructure, maybe if we had some of that money coming back to us, at least it would help ease in the, the burden in terms of the, you know, taxation. So I guess, if someone could clarify if it needs to go to motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. And many of these decisions have yet to be sorted at the Regional Service Commission level, at the RSC level. They will be the oversight to the regional facilities. The other thing that, that we want to caution is we don't want to see too broad an umbrella as to the identification of a regional facility. Because as the acting CAO pointed out, there are new facilities being built around our region. And which of those will be under the RSC and what will we be contributing to? So you're correct, there are a lot of questions. I will ask the acting CAO if he knows whether there would be room here for a motion or if that's something that would go back to the RSC. Thank you.
Well, your worship, if council wants to make a motion to see if the Qplex can be included as a, a regional facility, that's certainly council's prerogative to do that. Again, I would caution and echo the comments that you just made. If we start adding facilities into that, Hampton might decide after a year or two that they don't like the deficit on their new arena, and arenas, as we know, run deficits by their very nature. So they might go to the RSC. I would be extremely concerned about the city of Saint John. So right now, if they want to close three or four of their centennial arenas, which, as we know, in nineteen sixty-seven, they were designed because people used to go and walk to the rink after school. So there's one in east, north, not south, but to west, east, and north of the city. The city is going to say, well, we're getting rid of those, and now we're opening a, a fourplex wherever it is. So that's a regional facility. Well, why is it a regional facility just because you have four ice pads together? Why should the taxpayers of the region be on the hook for that? So I think we're treading in some dangerous water if we wanted to go back to the RSC and ultimately the province to say that the Qplex should be a regional facility, not only for the governance issues that I mentioned earlier, but for the long-term ramifications that all of a sudden we could see regional facilities pop. that all of a sudden we could see regional facilities popping up all over the place. And that's not happening in other parts of the province. Their list in most cases is one or two facilities. So we're at four, hoping to get to, or sorry, we're at five, hoping to get to four. Going to six or more seems to be heading in the opposite direction from my perspective. But again, that would be if a motion is duly made and seconded, doesn't even need to be seconded in this committee this morning or this afternoon, that would be council's purview. But staff would suggest you proceed with extreme caution on that.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. I'm going to go to Counselor Olson, please.
Thank you, your worship. This is exactly the point that I wanted to emphasize, that there's double standards around the province. And I would just like to see some consistency there. I, I don't really support adding the Qplex to the, to the list of facilities. I think you've, you've got Hampton, you've got Rossay that's still looking for some, some project down there. But I just think that there's inconsistencies in different regional service commissions. And there's a double standard on how they're being treated with. And I think that we're, we're looked at as somebody that could easily, easily pushed around to, to be told what to do instead of realistically looking at, at what we're dealing with and, and what our real questions are. Thank you.
I think that ties into the fact when we talk about regional facilities and the thing, obviously, that makes the Qplex stand out is the pool. So what would be to stop another community, and I'm not going to name any names, but one that maybe is looking to build an arena, all of a sudden says, well, we're going to build two racquetball courts with our facility. So now it's more than an arena, it also has a racquetball court. So we want that in the regional facilities as well. So people of Quispam Sis and Hampton and Fundy St. Martins and the new Fundy Rural District and the City of St. John and Grand Bay Westfield and Rossay and throughout the region can also pay for that. So it does open potentially quite a Pandora's box that there could be more facilities trying to be added to the list by various municipalities over, over the years. And then at that point, we would be in a tough spot to say, well, we don't think your rink with the racquetball court should be in because we wanted our rink with the pool to be in.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. And just a reminder, on October the 18th, at our regular meeting, there was a formal motion passed and a letter sent requesting that the RSC provide the definition of a regional facility. And that went out to the Executive Director, Mark McLeod. So just, we have a number of questions here. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Thank you, your worship. I'm sort of changing lanes here. But I wanted to pick up on one of your comments and I, I wanted to speak to this, but I wasn't sure where it fit in. And it has to do with the, the ratio of 1.5. So you alluded to the fact that government has dropped the provincial commercial rate and now has allowed municipalities to go anywhere from 1.5 to 1.7 or even lower than 1.5. And how that sort of, you know, we dropped it, but now if the municipalities want to pick it up, go ahead. So we become the ones that are going to look at this. That is a grave concern to me about increasing the ratio. And when it was first discussed years ago, I believe it came from a lot of the cities on the push for industrial sites to be able to recoup some of their tax dollars. I was never of the understanding that we were looking to earmark small business that, that they would be the ones paying the difference. Service New Brunswick has indicated, or the minister has indicated, that they do not have the software in order to divide categories. They can't say, well, this is an industrial rate, this is a commercial, small business rate. What defines a small business, business, 100 employees or less? Those things haven't been worked out at Service New Brunswick at this point. They just don't have the software to do it. So unfortunately, everybody's clumped together, commercial. At 1.5 or we have the prerogative to take it up to 1.7. My personal opinion on this is that we have seen two years of grief with COVID. We've seen a lot of small businesses striving to stay alive. And I would like to see Quispam Sis remain a community that invites and supports our small businesses the way that we support our residents. So I don't want to use that new factor of the 1.7. I would like us to say at least go down to the 1.6 or 1.5. We do have the chart here that shows what that means. It means finding $200,000 in savings from our budget in order to do that. And I'm prepared to look at that again, at our budget with a sharpened pencil and say, well, how do we do that? Where is it that we can find another 200,000? Or if council says, well, the factor should be 1.6, where do we find another 100,000? So it concerns me that we have two things happening. One is regional facilities, capital download, plus additional funding for just the regional facilities. And now faced with, it's up to you if you want to charge your small business more money. I don't know what municipalities in the greater St. John area plan to use that factor. But that's my personal opinion that I would like to see that factor not used this year. Where there's lots of talks of going into recession, there's lots of, you know, the economy contracting. And our first year at the Regional Service Commission going into uncharted waters. If we could just hold the line for one year, see where we come out at the end of the year, I would feel much more comfortable. And because that way we're taking care of, strengthening, supporting our residents plus our small business. So I would like that. And the last thing I would like to see with that, if council decides to go forward with it, I think it's really important that that be identified on the budget as a line item. It's important that we have transparency, that people can see that that is on, that that is being charged to commercial. If in fact, whereas right now, we can't see that on the budget. If you, if you don't know what a 1.5 factor is, you wouldn't look for it. Right? And it's already built into the budget. So those are my comments on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schreier. And I see our treasurer has her light on, so we'll go there first, Counselor Donovan.
Your worship, through you to the deputy mayor. So I just wanted to kind of, since the topic of the 1.7 was kind of brought up, I just want to, you know, just some information so everyone knows. So Quispam Sis is 94% residential, 6% non-residential, right? So when we look at our, our tax base, I think that's an important component to realize for this community is that our residents, our households bear the majority of all of the costs of running the town. So I think that that's, that's a piece. Another piece, again, there've been, you know, a lot of new changes with this budget. This 1.7 factor or ratio is, is part of that. And, and really in some communication from the province, the core grant, so we don't get the equalization, but we do get core grants. So the core grant is going to be phased out within the next, you know, five years. So our ability to recoup some of that loss is also why the 1.4 to 1.7 is kind of there for municipalities. So yes, the province is lowering their non-residential rate. We're lowering or proposing to lower our residential rate as well. And so with the core grant, and that's about $92,000 this year, that will be gone in a few years. So this is also another mechanism by which to recoup some of those items. And then when you say a, a line item within the budget, I'm just trying to kind of figure that out because we, we get one warrant, we get one, you know, and it's all kind of calculated behind that. It would all be in the warrant amount. We could look at ways to try and make that clearer, but, you know, we create the residential rate. The non-residential has the provincial component part of it. So it would kind of be a little hard for us to do that, but it is in our warrant. So we can explain that.
Thank you, Ms. Brandon. I will go now to Counselor Donovan, please.
Thank you. I do tend to agree with the deputy mayor. I, I understand your reasoning, Ms. Brandon, behind it all, and it does make sense. But I do think we went zero to 100 really, really fast. You know, if it was, we could choose from 1.4 to 1.7, and we're choosing 1.7. I think maybe there's some sort of happy medium that we're still getting money. But, you know, maybe we're not hurting businesses as much. So I would support whatever direction that goes in. And also, I wish we weren't so back and forth because I was, I was waiting to talk about the, the Qplex situation. And, you know, it's been brought up multiple times by the mayor and by the acting CAO that, about the governance, governance model. I'm just trying to figure out, in your opinion or your words, how it would actually change it. Because if you look at the governance models of, say, like TD Station or the Aquatic Center, they, if, if the Qplex was added, you know, I'm just trying, I'm trying to talk, please. So if the Qplex was added, then, lost my train of thought. Basically, I'm, all I'm trying to say is, you know, right now, the city controls the, the Aquatic Center and they control the TD Station. We don't have any say in that. So if our Qplex was added, then would it not be the same thing as the Aquatic Center and the TD Station where we still control it, but the outside communities are paying for it? Does that make any sense? You know what I mean?
Thank you, your worship. I'm not sure I would agree with the assessment that the city controls those facilities. And that's sort of the whole point. Those facilities are governed by boards who then report back to the Regional Facilities Commission, which as of today, still exists. And I believe your worship is the chair of that commission. There's so many commissions, but I believe that's one under your purview. So those particular boards have representation from all of the municipalities that are paying into the regional facilities, which is something that we do by law from the Greater St. John Regional Facilities Act that was enacted in 1998. So there would be somebody from Grand Bay Westfield, there would be somebody from the City of St. John, Rossay, sitting around that table and making decisions as to how we operate the Qplex. And then ultimately, those board decisions in terms of the budgets move forward to the Regional Facilities Commission. But that is going to change because the Regional Facilities Commission is going to be dissolved as of January 1st and fall under the Regional Services Commission as one of their mandated services.
Thank you. Yes, and it's, it's, it's my understanding that the boards are being phased out. So, so yes, I am the chair of the Regional Facilities Commission. I've yet to chair a meeting, but it may be phased out before I do get to chair a meeting. So they'll have, have to decide on whether or not they, they want me to sit and chair a meeting. You know, further to that, when we go to a board to decide on the operations and the capital expenditures that will be needed for our facility, again, I, I caution people to understand that, that that board that will oversee such a place as the Qplex will have a great say in, in how we move forward. And, you know, it's well-known that with our asset management, with our strategic plan, we do have guidance, we do have a staff that is saying, okay, we, we, we have this strategic plan in front of us. We have the asset management plan. And those are our guiding, the, the direction that we're taking. I'm not so sure that others would see it as important and as priorities because we do have to prioritize what we have in this town in order to continue growing forward. So I'm going to go to Counselor Bigger.
Thank you, your worship. I just want to say I would not support the addition of the Qplex into a regional facilities structure. And there's been lots said in the media and on social media between the various communities about all this issue of capital expenditures related to regional facilities as they're listed out now. And one thing I've noticed is that often where a particular community, perhaps such as ours, is trying to assert a value of autonomy, it's sort of framed as being an absence of commitment to sort of common good. And to my understanding, autonomy was part of the original concept around this whole idea that there was a concern about a regional municipality being formed and an effort was made to create some cooperation that would allow to, the, the chance to stave off the possibility of a full-on regional municipality amalgamation. And so in that sense, it seems to me that the very spirit of the regional facilities from the get-go was about finding some, you know, sort of practical cooperation, but retaining autonomy. And at this stage of the game, with so much uncertainty about where this is all going to land and what's going to happen, I just think it's in our best interest for the time being to retain autonomy wherever we can. And if we endure a little bit of sort of lambasting from time to time, then so be it. I expect that if it was deemed to be a better idea to make the Qplex or some other related facility in our community part of that structure down the line, that opportunity would exist. But I think for the time being, it's very, I, I believe it would be very ill-advised for us to consider something like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger. I'm going to Counselor Miller now, please.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I actually agree with Counselor Bigger. I don't want the Qplex to be part of the regional thing, but I don't think TD Station should be there. I, I will be looking forward, looking later on possibly a motion to find out whether we can have that removed. I don't think any rink should be included. So, so I, I brought up a little bit of a rat's nest here, but we shouldn't be there, but TD Station shouldn't be either. I, I just had one other comment. We did talk about the businesses were 4% to 6% of our, of our house, of our, of Quispam Sis. They may be, but when they're paying $3.3 million, $3.1 million of, of taxes to our municipality, I'm excluding the, the part that goes to the province. They're paying about 11% of our tax bill and they don't get garbage and things like that. So I, I think we have, I don't, I don't agree with the 1.7 because they're actually paying the same or a bit more than they are now. They should have a savings with us. I'm, I'm closer to a 1.55 to a 1.6. I think we should recoup some of the funding 100%. When we originally talked about the 1.7, we thought 15% was going down, it was going to go down 15% this year. Then we found out subsequently that it's going down 5%, 5%. So 1.7 doesn't make any sense. A little under 1.6, I think, makes it a balancing act that they're not paying more, they're going to pay a little bit less as well. And we're recouping a, a large portion of what they would have paid to the province if the province hadn't reduced it. So those are just my comments when we get there. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. Any further questions for the acting CAO, Mr. Kennedy? Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Oh, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You go right ahead. This is Counselor Luck.
Okay, thank you, your worship. I just wanted to make a few comments. I was being a little bit facetious when I asked my question about the Qplex. I do agree that we don't want to lose autonomy. But I guess to Counselor Miller's point, it's kind of like no rink or all rinks. And again, I think it's a slippery slope when we start going into all rinks. So anyway, hopefully that can get sorted. And then the other comment I made, I wanted to make was I wholeheartedly agree with Counselor Schreier in terms of her comments about our small business. I think that they have been front and center in terms of the impact COVID has had on them over the last number of years. And I just think being able to give them a little bit of a break because we, you know, again, part of our strat plan is economic development. We don't have big industry here in our town. And the last thing I would want to see is them negatively impacted. Especially to Counselor Miller's point, they still contribute a significant amount of volume in terms of tax dollars, even though they're only 6% of our non-residential makeup. So again, I definitely support lowering or keeping it on, on a lower scale in terms of the, the percentage that we're, we're charging them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Luck. I don't see anyone else with a question, so we will call up our treasurer. Oh, yes, certainly. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm not looking to have the last word. I'll leave that for the treasurer. But on the regional facilities, and I think it was Counselor Olson who was talking about the fairness, I think it should be noted for the record that the Avenir Center is part of the regional facilities now moving forward with this local governance reform in Moncton. So I think it would be an awfully tough. With this local governance reform in Moncton, so I think it would be an awfully uh, tough uh. Road to hoe to suggest that uh, T D Station should not be part of the regional facilities in Saint John, I think that would be. Trade and invention service, one thing I think we would be uh, I, I don't think that would ever happen, I mean, we could certainly push it, but I just think that would be. A fool's errand, it would never, ever come out.
Thank you very much, uh, now I'm calling uh, our town treasurer, Krista Brandon, for the final budget summary and comments. Miss Brandon, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon, your worship, deputy mayor, councils, staff, and those watching online, I get the easy part. Not. Um, so our administration started working on this budget early this summer. And what you've seen today in front of you is a compilation of a lot of hard work and effort by a lot of different people. So I do wanna thank everyone who has had a role in getting us to where we are today, which is um. A month closer to passing our twenty twenty-three budget. Um, so I wanna thank our finance committee, um, my fellow executive, executive team members. Um, the entire management team and, and my staff for their support and assistance. And I am especially thankful this year um, to Nancy Young and Leah Esti. Um, they have really put a lot of effort and overtime into um, putting this budget together for us, as I be dealing with some health issues, so. Thank you. Um, when we presented the draft budget to finance committee earlier this month, you know, we had to make some assumptions and some estimates. The draft budget we initially presented originally had the tax rate remaining the same and the tax base increasing by five percent. So this proposed budget now in front of you has our residential tax rate decreasing by three point one four cents. To one point two eight four nine from one point three one six three. And then at the end of my presentation and before you start your deliberations and debate, I will kind of run you through in detail all of the changes. That occurred to get us to the one point two eight four nine residential tax rate. So we'll start with the general fund and then we'll tackle the utility fund, so here's. Um, so this budget, like prior year's budget, is a budget that seeks to balance a variety of different priorities. In challenging times. Uh, we want to continue to provide the level of service that our residents expect. While taking into consideration our current economic environment. We are seeing cost increases and supply chain issues in almost every area of our operations. And you have heard a lot about that so far today. Um, we are also seeing inflation at levels that we've not seen in, in, in decades. Um, the total budget uh, for the general fund is just over thirty-one million dollars. Uh, which is an increase over twenty twenty-two of about two point eight million dollars or nine point nine four percent. Uh, our tax base increased by twelve point eight four percent or two hundred and fifty-nine million. And this should be noticed that we did use the one point seven ratio in our discussions. Uh, with our revenue exceeding our expenditures, though, this did allow us to recommend reducing the tax rate by the three point one four cents. So for twenty twenty-three, again, this would mean a tax rate of one point two eight four nine. Um, so what does this mean to the taxpayers, so that again goes back to that um, non-resident. Child um, calculation where we had the resident there on the first line, so just to, to reference that again. So our assessments. So here is our assessment numbers. Um, our assessment numbers for the last ten years, so the assessment numbers are final, but the tax rate, the total warrant, the total budget and budget growth. Are proposed at this point in time and won't be final until council approval. So our assessment base has increased by about forty-five percent since twenty fourteen, and our tax rate has increased. Over the time it's gone up and down, but a total of four point six four cents. So our assessment base growth. So here's our assessment base, base growth kind of reflected in a graph, so um. Our assessment growth has been fairly stable with a few anomalies, um, in twenty eighteen, we did see a decrease or some negative growth. And this year we've seen um, exceptional growth. Um, again, reminding everyone that the assessment numbers do include the one point seven ratio for non-residential, so if we do change that. Those numbers would change in some of your packages coming forward. And again, I just wanted to remind everybody, and I did state this earlier, that the, the core grant is going to be phased out, um, and so. This was an opportunity of the, the province giving us an opportunity to um, offset some of that um. Lost revenue that we're going to see uh, for sure in the next couple of years. So one of our biggest kind of grant pieces, our community, our Canada Community Building Fund, so previously the gas tax. So this twenty twenty-three budget is the last year of our um, current uh, five-year program that we are in. You know, we do hope that this is a, you know, this is a significant grant for us, and we do hope in the future that this will continue. Um, this funding comes uh, via the federal government, through our provincial government. Um, so it definitely is a very important piece of, of our funding. And for this five-year program, we have fully maximized the grant, and we've actually even pre-spent part of our. Twenty twenty-three contribution in twenty twenty-two to fund um, some of the projects. Um, but in twenty twenty-three, the utility fund will use about a hundred and sixty-six thousand. Which is just kind of residual um, money left within the grant, and six hundred thousand will be used um, to. Partially fund our street capital program. There's another uh, chart here that just kind of has um, our spending graph again, just, just shown in a, in a different um. In a different way. So our current practice uh, has been to borrow only for street capital, um, as these assets have a long useful life. And uh, by borrowing, it does spread the costs out over the fifteen years. Rather than if we would have funded as a pay-as-you-go item or from our current year's operating budget. Our debt ratio um, for twenty twenty-two is six point eight two percent. And it will go to six point nine percent in twenty twenty-three, and then it will drop to about five point six five percent. Um, by twenty twenty-seven, so again, that does free up some, some borrowing um, opportunities for us. And um, potentially it could allow us to increase the number of roads that we're doing, um, so. These debt ratio numbers, it is important to note too that we can go up to a maximum debt ratio of twenty percent. That's uh, through the local government, so we have a very um, stable, very kind of low um, debt ratio. On the general side. Um, so fiscal services, so this is where we record all of our long-term debt and our interest charges, as well as our transfers to reserves and transfers. To our uh, capital fund, so the um, increase to our debt service is related to increased borrowing over last year. Um, we have slightly decreased our transfers to reserve in twenty twenty-three as compared to twenty twenty-two. But again, our asset management plans call for, for long-term financial planning and consistent. Consistency, uh, so we wanna kind of add to our reserves to help support that strategic direction. So we try to use our reserve funds so that we can level off the costs, so we don't see peaks and valleys all the time. So it is an important piece of, of our um, of our funding capabilities and um. So our long-term debt. So this is just kind of some more detailed information on our long-term debt, and it is kind of fairly stable, we're. You know, anticipating borrowing for roads for the next uh, number of years, and then we do see a large debenture drop off in twenty twenty-seven. And so there will be opportunities um, for us to kind of refocus uh, what we can do with these available funds. When that time comes. Uh, our reserve funds. So again, our reserve funds, to, to me, it's about kind of a balance, right, we wanna make sure we're saving for the future. We wanna make sure we're paying for what our repairs and maintenance and our costs that we need to do and add, and to add new things in. Um, but our reserve funds are like ha, like as an individual, having your three months of expenses, you wanna have some money in, in the bank. Doesn't mean that you're going to expand all of those money in one year to, to buy a car, you wanna kind of make sure that you have that, that. Um, for future um, projects, so our general operating um, reserve is budgeted to ecre, to decrease, sorry. Um, and this is in regards to some potential funding of the deficit that we're currently seeing in our current financials. And our general capital reserve would be um, increasing by. Three hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, and again, having these healthy reserves, it's important. Is that it enables us to have a level of funding in years when we have little or no growth, we can pull that money out at that point in time. While still maintaining our service levels, um, it's about balance, it's some debt where it makes sense, some saving for the future. And some pay-as-you-go funding, so to me, it's really about balance. Um, our utility capital reserve will be significantly depleted by the end of twenty twenty-three. When we anticipate finishing some large capital projects that have spanned uh, the last few years. And that funding is sitting in our capital reserve. So we really will need to have some long-term strategic decisions. Made in the next few years regarding any sort of expansion um, to our utility capital. Uh, in order to expand, we will require significant grant funding, so I'm talking like the third, the third, the third, so. Third federal, third provincial, third municipal, in order for it to be kind of fiscally, fiscally possible for us to complete this expansion. So it is very unlikely that our utility customers would be able to bear the costs of all of this o- on their own, um, you know. As a community, and Gary's talked about it, about the expansion and the, can't remember the number, thirty to sixty million dollars. Um, you know, we don't have capability, borrowing power, any of that within our utility, so we definitely will need to have some. Significant grant funding in order for us to expand, so again, the more users you have, the more you expand it. The more the cost can be spread over rather than people seeing big increases, so we definitely have some. Some work ahead of us in regards to our utility planning and where we're going and what we want to be able to, to see in the town in the next five, ten, twenty years. Um, so at this point, so we have some options, so we can um, accept the budget as presented. Go forward with the one point two eight four nine tax rate, we can decrease um, expenditures, so. Whereby that would decrease the ta, or sorry, decrease expenditures, which would decrease the tax rate and potentially the level of service as well. Increase expenditures, which would increase the tax rate and, you know, increase the level of service that we're providing. We can borrow uh, funds to finance capital, depending on how we do that, we could save money or reallocate money. Or we could withdraw from reserves to fund um, these expenditures. So I will kind of take any questions on the general fund at this point in time, and then I will go in and review our utility. Financing.
Thank you very much, uh. For all the work that your team has done, I, I know that uh, it's been certainly a challenge, and I know how appreciative you are when you. Have been a little under the weather over the past little bit, so I'd like to thank your team, uh, Nancy and, and Leah. And, and certainly yourself for uh, being here the past week and uh, and, and particularly today. Uh, I know when the assessments came out, uh, I recall seeing uh. Mister Lane in the paper saying, uh, yes, the assessments have gone up, and I believe they've gone up as high in this area. To eighteen percent with a cap at ten, knowing that probably next year they're going to capture that other eight percent or whatever the remaining is. Uh, his response to fixing that was to. Issue to municipalities that they should reduce the tax rate, which is under the control of municipalities. And that not being enough, he gave some flexibility to cities and towns and municipalities. To adjust the, the rate for um, for, for anything that was non-residential. So it seems that his measure of uh, of fixing a problem was to pour it down on the municipalities. To come out being the bad guys, no matter what we do, I'm, I'm sure we're going to disappoint people, I'm sure we're going to make some people a little bit happier. Uh, but uh, but certainly, this is not a uh, uh. You know, an exercise for the faint of heart, because it's tough, it's hard, uh, people around this table have worked hard. Our staff have all worked very, very hard, uh, in extremely challenging times. So I am going to open up the uh, the floor to questions, and I see that councillor Olson has a question. And then I'll go to councillor Miller.
Thank you, your worship, uh, I too would like to uh, repeat what the mayor has said in the, in the staff's press, preparation. Of this budget, um, I think they've done an excellent job, created a lot of paper for us to review. And it's always easy to uh, to uh, tear something apart once you've got it in front of you, but try and prepare it yourself, no way. But uh, thank you for all of that, and any comments that I'm gonna be making are not personal. To your department or anything else, but an opinion that I have myself. I would like to respectfully uh, see council support a one point five five non-residential tax rate. And uh, and also at the same time, uh, retain the one point two eight four nine tax rate. If that's necessary to make a motion, I'd prepare to make that a motion.
Would, would you repeat that so that um.
Yes.
And Nancy can record those.
Yes, I will, your worship, uh, I was just saying that the non-residential will be reduced to one point five five. Plus, uh, retain the one point two eight four nine tax rate.
Councillor Olson, would you like to make that into a motion, please, would you make the motion? And we do not need a secondar for this because we are back in uh, closed but open to the public. Committee of the whole.
I think, I think the clerk has that uh.
Ms. Snow, would you like to read the?
Your worship, uh, moved by councillor Olson, the proposed twenty twenty-three budget. Uh, reduce the non-residential tax rate to one point five five and retain the one point two eight four nine tax rate.
Thank you, it's been moved by councillor Olson on the question, the floor is open for question, councillor Miller.
Um, yeah, first, I, I fully support the one point five five because it, it goes there, I guess. I'm o, I'm okay in theory, the one point two eight nine, but we haven't gone through what we need to cut. To keep it at that, because if you go one point five five, you have to find another hundred and some thousand dollars, um, we haven't gone through. Uh, whether we borrow or take from reserves, if we take some more from reserves or cut more from the borrowing, we actually have some extra money comes back to us. We haven't discussed whether we need two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to go to our reserves yet again next year. Uh, we haven't talked about, do we keep everything that was present, as presented, whether it's the Diggle sidewalks, so. Um, I, I don't know if we can do this in two motions, cause until we get all these other things, I, I think we take one. One bite at a time, kinda like eating an elephant, so I'm okay with the one point five five, but I don't know how the one point. Two eight nine, I'm, I'm okay with that in theory, but I just don't know how we're getting there yet, so.
Thank you councillor Miller, I'll go back to councillor Olson to see if he would like to change or amend, do a friendly amendment.
Uh, yes, I, I, I would like to reconsider my motion if I could, your worship, and just. Remove the retaining of the rate at one twenty-eight forty-nine, it, it might change a little bit here, there, whatever. But I think the, but the priority concern that I had was reducing the one. But I think the, but the priority concern that I had was reducing the one, the, uh, non-residential to one point five-five. So, uh, I, I had that question when I tried to include the two of them in my own mind, that I shouldn't have combined the two of them. I agree with Counselor Miller that, uh, the priority is to reduce the non-residential one point five-five.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. On the question, so the motion has been made to reduce the, uh, or, or, yes, to come from one point seven down to one point five-five. That's been made by Counselor Olson, and we're going to Counselor Thompson. On the question. Seeing there are none, please vote now. We can do a show of hands if people do not have their iPads up and running. Counselor Thompson.
Motion carried, six one, nay, Counselor Thompson.
Motion carried, six one, with a nay from Counselor Thompson. Thank you. Any further comments for Ms. Brandon? Did you have any comments you'd like to make? Ms. Brandon, please, our town treasurer.
Um, okay, so when I am done my presentation here and I pull up the tax tracking sheet, so that equates, that motion equates to about a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars that we'll have to kind of find. So when I'm done and we're ready to start kind of going through the debate, um, piece, then we'll have that number in, and you'll be able to see what the tax rate is at that point in time. And then the other motions will follow and we'll end the day with a number, so. So no other questions on the general? So we'll move on to the, oh, Counselor Miller.
Counselor Miller, please.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. Sorry, I'm not there, so I couldn't see what was being presented on the screen when you talked about, um, the reserves, that the, 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 uh, general operating was going down, the capital was going up three hundred and some thousand. I just have in my notes from our last meeting, uh, last Tuesday or Thursday, all days are blurs right now, that we are anticipating, just so everybody knows what we have in reserves, um, in the operating side, is, I believe it was nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars in operational reserves, and we're anticipating to be ending this year at two point seven million in capital reserves. I just wanted to confirm whether that is in, in accordance with what you were showing on the screen or not. I, I just couldn't see.
So the general operating, what we're anticipating, that closing balance at the end of 2023 is nine seventy-five, eight sixty-four. And for the general capital reserve, closing balance at the end of December thirty-first, 2023, is three point one seven million. Okay, so on to the utility then.
Moving on to utility, thank you.
Just wait for that to come up. It's a big file.
Okay, couple of, uh, technical difficulties here will be up and running in no time at all. Right, Lisa? Nope.
Few more.
Just moving a couple of slides along here.
One more.
There we go.
One more even, Lisa. Thank you. Computers can't live with them, can't live without them.
For anyone online, we're just having a couple of little glitches here with our technology, but we will be up and running and ready to go very soon.
Thank you. It's getting late in the afternoon. We've been here a while. Uh, Your Worship, maybe just in this interim while we're waiting, I would, I guess I'd just like to make a motion, a formal motion, related to what I had mentioned earlier under the, uh, under the grants, that, uh, council consider, uh, extending another thousand dollars to, uh, Shining Horizons, uh, therapy. And so I would just make a motion that we consider that, so we could get a vote on that, please.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Bigger. We do not need a secondar on that. On the question, Counselor Donovan, please.
Thank you. Um, I'm not against that. I do remember seeing in the, um, civic relations section that there was, I believe, eight hundred dollars earmarked for, uh, Sea Dogs tickets. Could we take that and put it towards the Shining Horizons?
It's gone. It, it's, it was gone already.
That, that was removed.
Oh, it was removed, okay, sorry.
So the motion on the table is to increase the line item for the Shining Horizons by one thousand dollars. On the question. Please vote now.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, you weren't coming up on the screen.
Sorry, and I believe, uh, Counselor Miller, I see his hand up as well. I, I'm just, uh, wondering, in light of us now potentially looking at ways to cut the budget, I'm not a big fan of, potentially, I agree with, um, Counselor Bigger. I think it's an important community, you know, resource. I'm just going by memory, because unfortunately I don't have a paper copy, so it's harder for me to keep scrolling back into the documents. But I believe, I, I guess what I'd like to see us do is potentially take the money that we've already committed and reallocate versus adding to that bucket, 'cause again, our goal right now is hopefully to decrease some of the spends. Um, and I'm wondering if we could potentially take the three thousand that we gave to the radio station and take a thousand from that and reallocate it, so we'd give the radio station two and the extra thousand to Shining Horizons. So again, I'm not against giving a bit more money to Shining Horizons. I think it's a, uh, worthwhile initiative, but I'm not a big fan of adding additional money at this point to the bottom line. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. Counselor Bigger.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, yeah, and thank you for the creative idea there. I, uh, yeah, I, I can understand your consideration there, and here we are talking about, you know, reducing our non-commercial rate in an effort to, you know, try to, which of course is creating an offset cost we're gonna have to try to, uh, overcome. And so perhaps my timing is as good as it always is, which is to say pretty terrible to try to inject this in here. But, uh, I, I guess the thing for me, and this is my own fault for being away for work, I guess, but I, I wish I had been here, uh, last week to be able to advocate for this at the time. I personally think, you know, I hope this doesn't make me seem entitled or anything, but I happen to think a thousand dollars is a very reasonable amount to just add to this section of our budget. And, uh, I don't really, I'm not really interested in removing what council has already given assent to for, uh, other organizations. Notwithstanding, I do appreciate your logic there, Counselor Luck, for sure. But, um, so I, I guess my motion is, from my perspective, is to just say, can we just please find another thousand dollars to give to, uh, this very worthy organization?
Thank you. On the question, I'm going to go to Counselor Donovan and then to Counselor Miller.
Thank you. I was just going to say that I agreed with, uh, Counselor Luck, and maybe if we didn't, um, wanna just take a thousand from the radio station, maybe we could just, you know, split the difference and maybe choose another organization to take, uh, you know, split it so it's less money from, um, either organizations. But I'll let somebody else speak for now, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Donovan. Counselor Miller, please.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. I guess through to you, to Counselor Bigger, I'm sorry, I joined a little late this afternoon, so I only got the end part of, of your explanation regarding, regarding why you wanted to add more, and, and I'm sorry I missed that, and I'm sorry if it's a repeat for others, but, uh, I was wondering if you could enlighten me to the, to, to why.
Through you, Your Worship. Thank you very much, Counsel Miller. Basically, I, it's just that, uh, I wasn't here when this section of the budget was discussed at the last council meeting. I was away. Had I been here, as I explained to the council earlier, had I been here, I would have spoken up and advocated for this one item. Everything else seems perfectly reasonable to me. Having just experienced what they do there personally, having seen it for myself, touring it as I did with the mayor at one point, I, uh, I just really strongly believe in what they're doing. I think that their ask of ten thousand is, uh, you know, I think that for us to, um, provide them with twenty-five hundred dollars is, uh, a more reasonable, uh, and supportive gesture on our part. There's a percentage of the, the, uh, clients that they work with who are from our region, and, uh, they exist solely on private donations, and they have an amazing work there, and I just really support it. And, uh, so that's, really, there's not much more to it than that. Uh, and had I been here the other night, I certainly would have, uh, I certainly would have spoken up at that point, so. I, I guess that's about it.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger. Counselor Miller, does that satisfy your question?
Well, sorry, my camera went off. Yes, yeah, I'm good, thanks.
Thank you. Heading now to Counselor Thompson, please, on the question.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm not adverse to, to, uh, shuffling some funds around to, um, add another thousand to Shining Horizon. But I, I, I'm a little confused, because di, did, did not council approve this as it stood? So do we have to rescind that motion to, in order to change it? I'm not entirely sure.
It was approved to bring forward to this, to today, is that correct?
Yes.
And?
Okay.
And that it could still be changed today?
Okay, great, thank you.
So the motion to add one thousand dollars to the Shining Horizons grant of fifteen hundred, uh, was moved by Counselor Bigger on the question. Please vote now. Well, I'm sorry, uh, Counselor Donovan.
The question I have is, is we're still very unclear, because you, you just said to add a thousand dollars, but are we, where, are we taking it from somewhere or are we physically? So we're, so we're just coming up with a thousand dollars? Okay, thanks.
Okay. All right. On the question. I don't see anyone's hand up. I don't see any lights flashing. Please vote now. Counselor Miller. We're waiting for your vote, please.
Oh, I voted, I voted, yes.
In favor, thank you.
Your Worship, um, motion carried for three. Nay is Deputy Mayor Schreier, Counselor Luck, and Counselor Thompson. I'm sorry, yes, that's right.
Motion carried for three with Counselor Thompson, Luck, and Deputy Mayor Schreier voting against. Thank you. Moving forward.
Okay, so our technical difficulties are fixed now. So we will talk about the utility operating budget. So our utility operating fund revenue is proposed to be almost three point eight million dollars. So again, we need to ensure the stability of our utility fund by slowly increasing rates so that we can plan for the future and pay for any of our current expenditures. So we have had to increase rates over the last number of years in order to fund our utility. So we are, um, included within this budget. We are proposing that this sewer user fee, um, be increased to, by three point zero nine percent. So the sewer rate would go from five hundred and eighteen dollars to five hundred and thirty-four dollars. On the water rate increases, we're proposing that the fix be increased by three point two percent to increase the annual fix charge from two fifty to two hundred and fifty-eight dollars. And that consumption also be increased by the three point two percent, um, to the water consumption charges. So we would go from a dollar point zero one nine nine to one point zero five two five for the first ninety-six cubic meters per quarter. And from one point six one five one to one point six 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 eight for usage above the ninety-six cubic meters per quarter. Uh, the largest expenditure within our utility fund is our debt service cost. And the next item would be kind of our, our pay-as-you-go, so paying, um, as we go for our capital costs. So our utility assets have long useful lives, but they are very expensive to build and put into the ground. So we are funding eight hundred and seventeen thousand in capital spending through our operating fund this year, which is an increase of two hundred and fifty-one thousand over 2022. Um, and this does reduce our ability to put funds into reserves for future capital projects. So you can see our reserve funds, last year we were budgeting to put three twenty-nine, nine forty. This year, it's only thirty-eight thousand. So for our utility fiscal services. So the debt ratio, um, for utility for 2023 is twenty-four point six seven. So whereas on the general side, we can have up to, uh, twenty percent debt ratio, on the utility side, we can have up to a maximum of fifty percent. So we do have some room for borrowing, and we have not been borrowing for utility over the last few years as we switched, um, our methodology with how we were allocating our gas tax fund or our Canada Building Community Fund. So we did move some of that money into utility so that we did not have to borrow for the last number of years. But right now, in our current five-year program, we do have some borrowing for utility for 2024 and 2025. And we do have two borrowings that are kind of finishing up this year. So this will give us some, some room to borrow in the future for utility projects. But again, I just, I just need to remind, I need to just say it again, that without significant grant funding, and this is talking about the third, the third, the third, we wouldn't be able to expand our water and wastewater utility in a fiscally responsible way. So that's a big, that's a big piece of information. So again, just, um, our utility rates. So again, we always consider the sustainability of our rates. Uh, we need to have significant funding in the future, and our asset management, for asset management and future water expansion. So this year, uh, Gary had talked about in the operating, our, um, condition assessment that we'll be doing on the wastewater, um, and the water utility. And that will be an important piece of, of where we're kind of going in the future with our utility. Um, so again, growing the rates now provides funding for our current, but also for our future, um, projects. And again, the budget was prepared with three point zero nine percent increase to sewer rates. Uh, which is about sixteen dollars and three point two zero on our water for both our fix rate and our consumption, um, rates. So any questions on the utility fund financing?
I don't see any questions. I can't see whether or not Counselor Miller or Counselor Luck have their hands up.
Okay, so the next, um, slide then. We'll kind of show our tax, um, rate tracking, so we'll just take a few minutes to kind of update that with the last few motions. And then we can, um, go through that document. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brandon. So moving forward, item number six. Council directive. So we, uh, we have already made, uh, one or two changes and now we're looking for a direction from council.
Oh, I've got one. I, um, have something that we should cut. It's not gonna be popular, but I do think we should take out the washrooms for this year at the, um. Bike park and maybe move that further, uh, a few years. So that's a hundred and twenty dollars, or a hundred and twenty thousand, actually. Um, we could save for this year. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Donovan. Counselor Luck, please.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. I'm just throwing it out there just to build on something that Counselor Miller had said, um, based on a question earlier. Um, you know, again, I think that the staff did a fabulous job. It's not an easy task, um, putting this budget together and I trust their expertise and, you know, bringing. You know, to counsel all the things that need to get, you know, um, paid for and, and developed. Um, but I'm wondering if, um, in terms of the additional headcount. For, um, the community services, I know Counselor Miller had asked about potentially hiring a summer student. And I'm just wondering if that could be explored in terms of, you know, finding some cost savings. So not that we wouldn't hire someone in the future, but would it be prudent to look at, is there. You know, can be alternative ways of providing that service this year? Um, and, you know, kind of looking at, uh, you know, the overall body count in terms of employees. So I'm just gonna put that out there for people to mull over. Again, I'm just thinking out loud.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. Moving to Counselor Olson, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh. I guess, uh, uh, based on, uh, Counselor Luck's just recent comments. I believe that the, uh, engineering department is looking for a, a junior engineer. To, uh, to stabilize some, uh, technical, uh, improvements to the operation of, of, uh, Mr. Lozier's department. So I don't think a summer student, uh, because we do get summer students now already. But I think that he's looking for something a little bit higher level, uh, abilities. Uh, I would, uh, I'd respectfully request or suggest that, uh, any, uh, any deficiencies that, uh, any shortcomings. A hundred and sixty-five thousand, whatever, whatever it is right now, a hundred and sixty-six thousand, that'd be taken from the, uh, uh, re, the Capital Reserve Fund. What is their motion?
Counselor Donovan, was your statement a motion? Uh, would you please repeat your motion?
Certainly. Uh, my motion would be to move the, um, planned one hundred and twenty thousand dollar washroom, uh, facility to. Um, maybe twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and that gives us time to, um, have a little bit more money for this year.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Donovan that the washroom change and bike station. At the Millennium Park Cycle Park be delayed for a year or two. Uh, I'm going to remove myself from the seat. Um, I was at the Millennium Bike Park on Sunday for its grand opening. So far this year, and it has not been opened a year, we've had over five thousand people go through the Millennium Bike Park. For the grand opening. We had expected about forty or fifty people. There was more than double that. Um, as a hiker and a person who appreciates having the amenities that we provide in this town. Uh, I certainly see the value of having, uh, a change room, uh, a bike wash and, uh, uh, washroom facilities. Uh, one of the things that we have been promoting in this community is a community of choice because of the amenities. One of those tourism attractions is to have a biking destination. For those who do not cycle, and I'm not a cyclist, however, I'm very familiar with cyclists. And know that this is a big product in many, many communities. And they do hold, uh, competitions. They, they travel around on their vacations with their bikes hooked on to the back of their cars. To visit places such as Quispam Sis. We have seven kilometers at this point in time, uh, in the Millennium Cycle Park. We're hoping that we can connect that to the, uh, uh, Hammond River Park. So we're looking at expanding that. We've come through COVID because in this community, we have the amenities that have allowed us to remain healthy, both physically and mentally. And that is what I would hope that we would continue seeing value in. When we value something, it costs us. We have to put money towards it. It shows how much we value something when we put that as priority. Thank you. I'm going back to the seat. So the motion on the table is that we remove the one hundred, uh, and forty thousand was? Uh, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. One twenty, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars, thank you, uh. From the, uh, bike park. For the change room and washroom. On the question. Deputy Mayor.
On your question, Your Worship, instead of going, um, I think instead of going by piece by piece with this, I would like to see it come as a package. If we have a few things that we're thinking of, um, doing instead of saying, okay, now this was done and now we're gonna do this. I'd like to sort of hear what other op, um, suggestions are being put out there such as, um, transfers from capital. Um, whether that's an option that council would like to consider. I, I, I don't think it's in our best interest to piecemeal this at this point. Um, I'd like to see, uh. Excuse, um, so anyway, I would like to s- state that. I, I think we should put all the options on the floor. Before we vote on individual items. And I know that, um, the Capital Reserve might be something where we can, um, use that money as, uh, Counselor Olson, I think it was, or Counselor. Miller had alluded to, so. Anyway, that's just on the process. I think it'll be much easier and less painful.
Thank you. I don't think that there was a list. I, I think we were looking for a consensus and a couple of items have come up, but I'll go to, uh. Our treasurer, Krista Brandon.
Uh, through you, Your Worship. So, um, on the screen now, we do have the tax tracking kind of, um, schedule. So I have put in the, um, motions that were made while I was, uh, doing the presentation. And then since we've sat down here, um, so really it's council's prerogative. We're going to need to kind of, you know, go through them one by one. If you want to list them and then vote on them. You can see the change kind of right here and that impact that that makes. Um, or we can do them one at a time. However, council wants, wants to do, we're prepared to go, um. Whichever way you, you would prefer.
Thank you for that suggestion. I'm going to go to Counselor Olson.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, with all due respect, uh, it's been tradition that we've dealt with items. Uh, one by one because it, uh, they, uh, either survive or get turned down on their own merits. And it's good, it's confusing to add a big list of, uh, of ones that, you might support some and might not support another. So I'd respectfully suggest that we continue on and, uh, let, uh, let the individual items come up. And, uh, then they can survive or be approved or disapproved on their own individual merits. But, uh, that's, uh, that's my thoughts and what, that's what, that's the process that we've done in the past.
Uh, Your Worship, can, can I just ask?
Counselor Olson, that, that's correct. That has been the, uh, procedural, uh, forces that have, have directed us in the past. Uh, yes, Counselor Luck.
Uh, sorry, I was just wondering if, if, um, someone is showing, like, I'm seeing all the council. I'm just wondering if there is something being shown on the, the video. If that can be shared on the screen, that'd be great. Thanks.
Thank you for that. Do you see it now?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the table?
Wait, do, Your Worship, yes. The motion was moved by Counselor Donovan.
Yes, please.
Uh, moved by Counselor Donovan. Remove the hundred and twenty thousand for the Millennium Cycle Bike Park Washroom Change Station and Bike Station. To the twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five year.
Thank you, Ms. Snow. On the question. I don't see anyone's hand up on screen. Counselor Thompson.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. I, I, I will not support removing that, uh, those washrooms. Um, that milli- millennium cycling site, um, there is nothing there. You know, there's nothing for anyone to use, to use a washroom, to change, to do anything. And, and as we've already stated, it's used heavily. I don't, I, I, I won't support just sort of, uh, because it's a, an item of a hundred and twenty thousand. Uh, to jump on that particular item. So I, I certainly will not support taking that, uh, out of the budget.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. On the question. I don't see any hands up on screen. I don't see any lights flashing. Please vote now.
Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Deputy Mayor? Nay? Motion defeated, two to five. Uh, yes, please identify the names.
Uh, nay, Deputy Mayor Schreier, Counselor Bigger, Counselor Luck, Counselor Olson and Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, Ms. Snow. I don't know if there was another motion coming to the table.
I, I have my hand up. I'm not sure.
No, I don't, I can't see you. Okay?
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, uh, Counselor Luck.
Okay, thank you, Your Worship. I just want you to circle back around. Um, uh, Counselor Ol- Olson had mentioned that we need the person in engineering. And I wholeheartedly agree that we need the extra body in engineering. That wasn't actually my comment. My comment was, um, about the parks position. So this town staff or the SLT has asked for two additional bodies. Um, again, based on the town growth in the building, um, yes, I agree that we need a specialized person in the engineering department. I'm wondering, again, just looking at not forever, but looking at ways of saving money in this budget, trying to keep all of our tax rates as. You know, as it stands, is, is there opportunities to look at, you know, again, paying a summer student, which would cost significantly less because of benefits, et cetera. Um, you know, and then relooking at this maybe for next year. And I'm not sure if maybe the Director of Community Services could even speak to what that cost savings would look like, just so we have a better understanding of if that might be a solution or not. You know, I'm not sure if it would save that much money, but I'm kind of getting this, you know, I'm thinking that a union position with benefits versus a summer student. Um, or a seasonal worker. I'd like to kind of understand what that might look like. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Luck. I will turn the mic over to, uh, our Director of Community Services, Ms. Perton Dixon.
Thank you, Your Worship. The skill sets are very different, obviously. It's really hard. You can't compare a student to a full-time staff person. Um, a student is ten weeks in the summer. They're new. You train them. They're are very hardworking students. We've been fortunate to have lots of them. Um, and they mow our lawns and they take care of our flower beds and they do a lot of great work for us. But to compare a summer student to a full-time parks attendant. Is, um, quite a leap and you, you just can't compare them regardless of the cost savings. Would there be some? Yes. We're looking for somebody twelve months of the year, somebody that is skilled, somebody that is gonna be added to our complement that will help us. To, um, with our work. And our work is varied. It's not, it's not unskilled labor. Um, our staff are very, uh, well-trained, passionate about what they believe in. But right now they are at a tipping point. And I mentioned some of the facilities that are, and other things that have been added to our plate since twenty fourteen. And I can go through a list, um, if needed, but, um. I'll just again highlight some things that we've added. The pickleball courts, the outdoor classroom, the green space, the mountain bike park, the QR trail and parking area, Matthews Cove. Trails at QMS QES, next to the retention pond from Vincent to Queen Berry. We've also, Queensberry, excuse me. We've also added dog park lighting, means curve ball field lights, netting and a building, expanded the boat launch and dock system, Chelsea Park, Squire Drive Playground. Highway signs, street furniture on the Vincent Road, residential curbside recycling and waste removal. It's a million-dollar contract. That's also in our department. We respond to all the calls every week, every day of the week from residents regarding their waste removal. Uh, we're adding the new utility building next year as well. It's Hammond River Park and the splash pad. These items require, as I mentioned earlier, asset management, inspection, repairs, monitoring and maintenance. And again, aligns with our strategic plan of capacity building. So with all due respect, I, I've, I, I struggle with the, you know. Suggestion to add a summer student to the staff complement because quite frankly, that's not going to help us. Thank you.
Thank you for that explanation and clarification. I will go now to Counselor Olson.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh. I think with some of the, uh, some of the discussion that has taken place so far, that we have a small shortage. Uh, in, uh, of money, uh, to retain, uh, one twenty-eight, uh, uh, four nine, uh, tax rate. But, uh, if, uh, if that, uh, is still the objective of council. I would respectfully suggest that any shortfall, uh, uh, come from the, uh, General Capital Reserve Fund.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
It's been moved by Counselor Olson. On the question, Ms. Brandon.
So I just wanted to make sure, so coming from Capital Reserve, so on our twenty twenty-three capital budget, we will add. It looks like it's about. A hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars that would come from the General Capital Reserve. And thereby reduce our contribution, um, from operating to capital by that same number. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brandon. Counselor Donovan, please.
I just wanted to say that Counselor Miller had his hand up for a little bit.
Thank you, Counselor Donovan. Counselor Miller, please.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. Actually, I'll, I'll just make a quick comment and a question for the Director of, uh, Community Services. I, I agree you need a full-time person. Uh, I guess my question to follow up, uh. I noticed when, uh, Mr. Lozier was sho- I noticed when Mr. Loge was showing his person, he was starting, he was going to start in the middle of the year, six months. So I'm wondering if you were the same because I'm looking at the staffing increases well over 100 and some thousand dollars. So are you starting your person the first of the year or is it partway through the year? And then my second thing would be about Counselor Olson's comment. I don't know if we've gone through all of the other things that people may or may not want to remove yet. And before you take something out of capital reserve, we're trying to put in $254,000 in this budget into capital reserve. And we haven't talked about whether we borrow 1.18 million or, and have our debt increased. But anyways, I'll, let's go for question one first. So I do support you. I just want to know whether they're starting for the full year because Mr. Loge said six months. And then we'll get to the next one. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. I'll go to the Director of Community Services and let her answer that question.
Thank you, your worship. Certainly, we would be interested in delaying the start of that position for cost savings. You know, it would be great to have them on for the spring during our peak season if we could trim that down to eight months, if we had to, six months, but that's certainly something that we would do.
Thank you, Ms. Perton Dixon. You have a motion, right? I'm going to ask the clerk to read the motion, please.
Your worship, through you, it was moved by Counselor Olson. The $165,000 amount required to retain the tax rate at 1.2849 be taken from the General Capital Reserve Fund?
Thank you, Ms. Snow. It's been moved by Counselor Olson. On the question, I don't see anything on screen. I see no lights flashing. Please vote now. Counselor Miller, your vote is not showing up.
I voted no.
Thank you.
Your worship, five-two, and nay, Counselor Luck and Counselor Miller.
Motion carried, five-two, with nays from Counselors Miller and Luck. Thank you very much. Any other comments on the budget to date? Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you, your worship. I actually have three, but I'll go through one at a time. And I'm sorry, I missed part of the Diggle Drive sidewalk discussion. I was able to hear Deputy Mayor Schreier's question before I had to get into a different meeting. So I was hearing a little bit about, we don't need to put sidewalks all the way down. We can do different things. I'm very unclear whether we were going to be ripping up our current road that we just put in to put sidewalks on, what we already have as a walking trail on one side, or if we were putting the sidewalks or walking on the steeper side. So I don't know where that ended up. I just could hear parts of, we could do this, we could do that. So are we still at $180,000 for that or was there something else said? And it was changed a bit because I frankly don't think we need a sidewalk all the way down towards Nightingale where you have limited traffic except for when the buses go there themselves. So I don't know where that ended up and if somebody could inform me whether we stay at 180 or if there was a reduced amount. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. I'll go over to Director of Engineering Works and Utilities, Mr. Loge.
Thank you, your worship. The discussion that we had at that time, Counselor Miller, was that the review of the sidewalks is really still up in the air. The intent was not to tear out any of this road strips with the rumble strips or the walking lane that we had there. The goal was to make sure that we could get a full network that would take us right from Diggle Drive, past the entrance at Meadowlark Subdivision, down into the, to the area around the Copie Anier. That would likely involve construction of sidewalk on the church side or some type of a walking lane or whatever on the church side. There is a curb for part of it and there's a ditch for part of it. So we would really have to look at the design a little more closely to how we would accomplish that. The goal is to get a controlled access. That is where the people cross the street at Diggle and at Meadowlark to get over to that, to the walking lane side of it. It may require an extension of some of the sidewalk because we were just past that first driveway on Quistpampas Road to take us up a little ways to get, say, to the first or second intersection with Meadowlark. But it will not be a sidewalk to full length. That would be well over $200,000 to do that. As far as your point about going down to the QR, that was not part of it either. We're looking at smoothing out the walkway that's there, may require some milling of asphalt and a more level walking surface. So the opportunity is there, depending on the design, that this may not come in at the 180 as budgeted. And that was, you know, a placeholder that we would identify so that we would not go beyond that. But I would imagine that we are looking at something in that 120 to 180 range, just depending on the options and the pricing of materials next summer.
Thank you. Very clear. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Loge. Thank you for your question, Counselor Miller, and Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, your worship. I guess one question I have, and I'm going to actually perhaps through you to the Director of Community Services, Director of Engineering, or CAO, and our Town Treasurer. I mean, this is our SLT and they're the experts in, you know, kind of the day-to-day functioning of our town. And I guess I'd like to pick their brains a little bit in terms of, I think we're looking at trying to find about $200,000. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that will bring us back up to kind of a balanced budget as per presented, if, you know, because we've lowered the non-residential tax rate. And I'm just wondering from their perspective, I know that you, you know, again, you go, you know, go big or go home. So you're putting in, you know, I mean, kind of your ideal, what you think needs to be done in 2023. And, you know, I'd like to know from their perspective, if, you know, they had to shave something off, you know, what are some of the things that perhaps they feel maybe could be pushed a little bit further or any cost savings from their perspective that, you know, because if everyone found, you know, $50,000, all of a sudden, our, you know, solution is, you know, kind of at the table. So I'm just wondering if they have any suggestions or ideas in terms of things that we could consider. Thank you.
Thank you for your question. I'm going to go to our Treasurer, Ms. Brandon.
Thank you, your worship. Through you to Counselor Luck. So at this point in time, with the last motion to increase the capital funding, we are now back at the 1.2849 tax rate, which is what we had. We have adjusted the non-residential from the 1.7 ratio to 1.55. We've increased the $1,000 to Shining Horizons. There's just an in and an out for the mountain bike park washroom because that was defeated. And we have the transfer from the capital reserve to lower our contribution from operating. So we are now back at that balanced item. I feel that, and I'll say a few words and then I'll let our acting CAO talk, but as administration, we've gone through the budget. We have removed items that we felt that could be removed or, you know, we're waiting for more information on. There's some from In Gary's area and some in Dana's area as well. And, you know, I feel like we've kind of gone through and done that. This is balanced budget. It has a little bit of saving, a little bit of borrowing, a little bit of paying as we go. You know, we've adjusted, we're still lowering our tax rate. So I think from that point, there really is, you know, not much unless we're just going to be deferring into future years, which is then just transferring, you know, that decision to a later point in time. So Erin, did you want to add anything to that?
Thank you, your worship. I think it's important to identify that there's a trust relationship between our staff and our council. And I think when you see the items that are on this budget that come before you in this 182-page document, that they've been vetted. They've gone through various chains of command within each department. And they're there for a reason. They're not there because we hope to leave here today saying, hey, we snuck that one in or we got that through. They're there because we as staff and as a team, as I mentioned this morning, working together, feel that they need to be there. You've heard the push for the two positions. I know that the Director of Community Services and the Director of Engineering and Works don't come forward with those requests on a whim. They come forward because they need them. The Director of Engineering talked about burnout in departments downstairs. The Director of Community Services rhymed off a litany of responsibilities that her Parks and Facilities crews have and why those two positions are integral for different reasons within the entire organization. So I appreciate the discussion. I appreciate Counselor Olson's motion to go into the reserves and move that money around to allow us to stay with the tax rate that was presented by staff. And I certainly appreciate council's decision in reducing the non-residential tax factor from 1.7 to 1.55. So in terms of other things that we could live with coming out of the budget, I would say the answer is we can live with it. That's the prerogative of council. If you take things out, we don't take things personally around here. But I think that there is a certain level of trust that has developed, certainly between this council and myself as the administrator and working with the executive team and everybody else within the organization. Now, when we come forward with a budget like this, the items are in there for a reason and they're not just in there because we threw them in hoping that they would get through. So I appreciate the discussion and I certainly appreciate council's support of what has been presented to you today. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. And I see hands up on the screen. I will go to Counselor Luck first.
Thank you, your worship. I just want to respond. So, you know, I'm a little offended that my comments were taken out of context. The whole purpose of me going back to our senior leadership team is because of that element of trust that this acting CEO just referred to. You know, again, they are the experts in this area. So with anything and any decisions we make, we always go back to the experts and they are the ones that see the boots on the ground and what needs to be done. You know, budgeting is not an easy process and I just want to make sure that my comments weren't taking out of context because that's not how I intended them in terms of trying to suggest that they were trying to sneak things in. That was not my intent. My intent was because I trust their expert opinions in each respective area. And as we know, I mean, sometimes, you know, you have certain things that you have to prioritize over another. So my question was really more around, you know, priority setting and some of the things we put in a budget, as we all do, even if they're extremely important, you know, the experts would be the ones that would be able to say they're extremely important, but could we potentially lessen the amount or push them off? Those are the discussions that I was hoping to have, not that I was questioning, you know, their integrity. So I just wanted to clarify that because that was not my intent and I don't want to have my comments taken out of context. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. And Counselor Miller had his hand up, but I don't see him.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Miller. You're on.
Can you see me now? So basically, we're at the end and I think there's only one other thing to discuss that I think everybody on council should be conscious of, and I mentioned it earlier. So we've got the budget. We've agreed or disagreed, but we've got everything passed to where it is. One thing that really concerns me that I will have a hard time accepting or voting yes to this budget is the following. Our current debt servicing costs were $1.9 million last year. They're going to be $2.1 million this year, 2.1 million. Interest rates are going to go up, so things go, get higher. This budget, we originally, before you saw it, or most people saw it, it was a $1.68 million borrowing. Now it's down to $1.18 million worth of borrowing. The spreadsheets you show show 3%. I highly doubt we're going to borrow anything at 3%. I know that was the average over the last x amount of years, but prime rate's 3.25 today. Tomorrow, it's probably going to be four. And there's no sign of it going down. I have a very hard time having our debt ratios, now, debt ratio is one thing, but as our assessments keep going up and our budget goes up, doesn't mean we're not spending more because we are spending more. Our budget, as far as, again, deficit ratios or deficit ratio, debt servicing is 2.1 million. If you look, the next few years is going to get up to 2.4 million, which is almost what we're putting in for roads. So I have a hard time borrowing 1.18 million when we're putting, on the other side, we've allocated $245,000 to go to our reserve. And in our reserves, after the last motion, we're down to 3.1 million in capital and $975,000 in operations. So we've got basically $4 million in reserves. We're planning on putting another 250, yet we're borrowing 1.18 at like four or 5%. So I know we keep saying boring, but if you look at the 2024, we're looking at borrowing 1.9. So we either are borrowing too much. We have too much on here. Our tax rate's not too high. But I can't vote to put more into reserves and borrow 1.1 million and have our debt servicing go to 2.1 million. So I know most of you won't support paying it all out of that, but I think having 1.18 million of borrowing and putting 245 in reserve planned and then still having 3.9 million in reserves, I can't support. So I would like to reduce the amount of borrowing and take more from reserves, but I'm only one vote. So that's just my thought and I'll see if anybody supports denies or doesn't want to go any farther. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. I will go to Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, Counselor Miller, for pointing that out. And it is, it's a dilemma. I mean, it's sort of like, you know, if you owe bills and you have money sitting in the bank account, you take money out of your bank account to pay the bill or do you keep some money for a rainy day? And that's the balance. And so, you know, I would be open to suggestions of what that could look like. You know, does it need to be borrowing 1.18 million? Could the amount of borrowing be reduced? And to make it, I don't know what percentage that is of our actual reserve. So, and I do agree that I do believe, I think we're scheduled for another interest rate hike in the next, this Wednesday or it's coming up or next Wednesday. So I believe that corrections are going to continue to happen in the long term. So I support Counselor Miller in this as to what suggestions there would be for not borrowing as much and how that would affect the budget. And so your comments for the treasurer are much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schreier. I will go first to our treasurer and then to Counselor Olson and then to Counselor Luck.
Through you, your worship. So I will just say, like, so again, this is about balancing. You know, we have reserves. They're healthy. They will be there for that kind of rainy day or when we are seeing assessment kind of growth, not changing. The only money that we're putting into the reserves this year is an essence, the one-year kind of cost of borrowing for any kind of items that we are borrowing for. And again, so we borrow for certain expenses that we pay out, like for street capital, for example. We don't see that cash flow for about another 18 months or so. So we adjust the budget to account for that cost of borrowing kind of decision. So if we were to, let's say, not borrow this year, the 1.1, that would take our capital reserve down. Just give me one second. We had 3.17. We're taking out 165. So that would leave us about 1.8 million in our So that would leave us about 1.8 million in our capital reserve. For an organization our size, that's not a lot to kind of have set aside for those pieces. But again, that's council's decision. We as administration try again to balance everything out and try to save a little bit, like I've said, borrow a little bit, and then also pay as, pay as we go. And a large chunk of what we're doing right now is paying as we go. The more we can kind of build up our reserve funds over time, we can try to flatline those so we don't see kind of different peaks and valleys. And that's really all that we're trying to do as administration is to make sure that we, you know, yes, have enough money in the bank, because again, we do carry that borrowing and we pay those expenses before we've even seen any of our borrowing money. So for example, our 2022 street capital, we won't see that money until late, maybe June of 2023. So we're carrying that money and paying for that. So that's again, what some of those reserves are for. It's also for cash flow and a whole bunch of other things. And that's why we do try to balance everything. The methodology has been to borrow for roads again, because those are more long-term assets, easier to borrow as a chunk rather than piecemeal pieces of things. And again, we're just trying to strive for that, that balance without increasing our tax rate all the time or necessarily decreasing it all the time with all of those things. We're trying to level out those impacts.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Counselor Olson.
Thank you, Your Worship. I was just going to suggest that if Counselor Miller had a motion that he was prepared to promote, that I'd be willing to listen to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. I'm going to Counselor Luck.
I was actually going, thank you, Your Worship. I was going to actually reiterate what Counselor Olson has just said is I'd like to hear from, you know, I have great respect for Counselor Miller and his business acumen. He has a lot of corporate memory. He's been with the, the town for a number of years. Don't let that go to your head, Counselor Miller. But I do, he has a good sense of numbers and I, you know, he brings up a really good point. And, you know, I, I respect what our town treasurer has just said as well in terms of, you know, trying to find that balance. But I'm, I am wondering, especially in light of interest rates where borrowing is going to cost the town that much more, if, you know, is there kind of, kind of a middle ground that we can all, you know, find where we maybe borrow a little bit less? And I'd like to hear what Counselor Miller might suggest that, you know, again, might, you know, decrease the amount of interest that we're paying in the long term. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. I don't see anyone's hand up.
Was it for me to speak now? Sorry.
Go ahead, Counselor Miller.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you. So if, if I were to make a motion, there's, there's a couple things. One, I don't want to borrow the whole 1 point or, or wipe out the whole 1.18 million. That's too big of a, a stretch. My thought process would be take $180,000 from the current reserve that we're going to be putting in there. So just, just bear with me for a sec. So that would bring it down from 245 down to 75. That would bring our, and put that totally towards the borrowing. So our borrowing would look at a million. And then instead of taking a million from borrowing, I would say cut it in half. Take 500 from reserves. So it'll drop you down to 2.5 million left in your reserves. You still borrow $500,000, but by not borrowing the additional $680,000, you actually will save about .3 cents on your tax rate. I would still keep the tax rate the same, put that other additional .3 cents back into the reserves. So I know it's getting complicated here now. So then you'd be putting over $100,000 back into reserves as a planning. So my motion would be borrow a million dollars or half a million dollars. Take 180 from
Counselor Miller, you are cutting out. Could you repeat your motion, please?
So the, can you hear me now? Okay, now?
We can, but every now and then your voice fades.
Okay. My motion would be only borrow $500,000, take $500,000 from the reserve fund, take 180 away from our current allocation to reserved. And then any tax rate savings, because if you're borrowing 500,000 versus 1.18, you're going to save about .3 cents on the tax rate. Funnel that back into the reserves. So keep the tax rate as, as stated. So your actual amount into reserves, after you do all this backward math, would be about $100,000 would still go to reserves. And you would, you would reduce the amount of borrowing for next year. And you would keep your tax rate at a, at the same level.
Thank you, Counselor Miller.
Did you get that, Kathy?
She's working on it.
Sorry.
Kathy's going to
It's harder being remote.
If you wouldn't mind just hanging in there and listening, she, our clerk is going to read that.
Move by Counselor Miller, borrow 500,000, take 500,000 from reserves, take 180,000 from the current allocation that was going into reserves, and any savings, which I believe you said represent 1.3 cents on the tax rate, to funnel back into reserves. So that would give 100,000 still going into reserves and keep the tax rate at the same level.
It's only about a .3 cents or .25. I, I, I'm just doing the math in my head, but I would still keep the tax rate as is. I wouldn't drop the tax rate anymore because we're going to need it over the next few years.
Thank you. So the motion has been made by Counselor Miller on the question. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Just on the question, I'd like to hear our treasurer's comments on that recommendation before we vote.
Ms. Brandon, please.
So that one, I'm just going to need just a little bit of time. I just want to make sure I'm clear. So right now, we have 1.1 million coming from borrowing. We change that to 500,000 of borrowing from the general capital reserve. And then we'll adjust our reserve transfer contribution, which is based on the 1.18 million, and then put that into reserve so that we're close to the 1.2849 tax rate?
Counselor Miller, did you hear that? And is that
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I put my, my thumbs up. Sorry, you couldn't see me. So, yeah. So whatever the savings is, because you're not borrowing as much, we won't be paying as much on interest rate next year, that that just gets funneled back into, keep, keep the tax rate as is. Yeah, as, as stated.
So we'll just take that as a, as a, as a takeaway. I understand what that motion is, but I'll need time to kind of run through everything to kind of take it to that rate. But I, I understand the gist of that motion if that passes.
Thank you. I will go to Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Schreier. No, okay. Counselor Donovan, please.
I was just going to ask if that was something that she would need like a while to do, or if we could take like a break or how that's working.
Ms. Brandon, is that something you need a fair amount of time?
Well, if you wanted to go through the motion first, if it does pass, then we can do that or then we can take that. I understand what you need to do. And then we can go back and we're bringing this forward to council on November 2nd. So we could take that and that would be what the documentation that you'd see on the second. I'm not sure if you need to see that right away, but I just would like some time because there's a bunch of in and outs with that. So.
Perfect. Thank you. We have a motion on the table. Are there any more questions? I'm going to close to questions and have the clerk read the, the motion. Thank you.
Through you, Your Worship. Move by Counselor Miller, the town borrow $500,000 from the municipal capital borrowing board, take 500,000 from the reserves, take 180,000 from the current allocation from reserves, and any savings approximately .3 cents on the tax rate savings, funnel back into the reserves, 100,000 still to go to the reserves and keep the tax rate at the same level.
Thank you very much. On the question, please vote now.
Sorry, Kathy, my screen crashed, but obviously I was in favor.
Deputy Mayor said yes. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Item number six, Province of New Brunswick. 2023 tax bases, community funding and equalization grant. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
I, I believe this is just for information purposes for, we were going through the budget process that we've all had an opportunity to look at. So I put a motion to receive and file.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier to, to receive and file. On the question. Please vote now. Mayor said yes. Counselor Miller, are you in favor of that motion? Or against?
In, in favor, Your Worship. Sorry, I'm going to reboot my, my e-scribe.
Thank you. Motion carries seven zero. Down to reports, finance committee meeting. Oh, sorry. The, yes, the Quisfemsis Municipal Report Information. You put them together? Okay. Did you get that? Okay. Item number seven, reports, finance committee meeting. We have the minutes from the finance committee meeting. Counselor Olson.
Yes, Your Worship. I would move a receive and file.
Been moved by Counselor Olson to receive and file the minutes from the previous council, uh, finance committee meeting. On the question, please vote now. Counselor Miller. Okay. Motion carries seven zero. Number eight, resolve to open session. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
So moved?
Moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier to resolve to open session. And that is seconded by Counselor Olson. Oh, we still don't need a secondary. Okay. On the question, please vote now. Counselor Luck and Counselor Miller. Counselor Luck, we have yours. Counselor Miller? Okay. Motion carries seven zero. And business arising from committee of the whole. That has been removed. I am very grateful for everyone being here today. Thank you to staff for all the hard work. Certainly, this is, is not an easy task. And as a community of choice, we continually look to prioritize what our needs are. And in moving forward, I hope that we will see that this budget is still providing for the residents of this community and that 2023 will bring us even further away from COVID, which seems to be throwing its net upon us once again. So I will go to Counselor Olson. Before I do that, Counselor Olson, I'd like to thank our acting CAO for the work that he has done throughout this past budget year. And certainly a lot of gratitude to you, Mr. Kennedy, for giving the leadership and direction to the rest of our staff. So thank you.
Move adjournment, ma'am, chair.
It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Donovan, that we adjourn this meeting. On the question, Counselor Donovan?
Just really quick, we don't have another meeting until after Halloween, but I would just like to remind everybody that there will be a lot of children, obviously. So please drive safe on Monday during Halloween. Thanks.
Thank you for that reminder. Certainly appreciated. On the question, please vote now. Motion carries seven zero. Thanks, everyone. Have a good rest of your afternoon.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great day.
Bye, Carrie. Bye, Kirk.